Laura, you can hear us? Okay. Laura, can you hear us? Uh, Laura, can you hear us?
Yep.
All right. All right, uh, call this, uh, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two work session to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Dorr?
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Dr. Culler?
Here.
Mrs. Mayers?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all, have there any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's approved. We'll move forward to comments on any topic from people in the audience. Just remember, you'll have three minutes. And please, uh, state your first and last name and, uh, where you live. What township you're from. Dr. Russell, do you want to just get the timer going? Are, are there any public comments from anyone in the public? And we'll... Yeah. Second, is your microphone on? Try now.
Okay, is that it?
Perfect, thank you.
Um, I'm Shannon O'Keefe, I'm from Trapp. I'm a senior here at PV High School, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you for a few minutes. I'm here to speak to you about the reasoning behind the sudden push for the dress codes within the first week of school. I understand the dress code, uh, I understand the new push for lanyards and the hall passes, but the dress code is raising a lot of questions for not only our female students, but from our teachers as well. The lanyards and the hall passes are for our safety and in case of threats, but I don't find the gap between my shirt and my pants to be threatening. Is, it's seen as dangerous in our school because it's what it's starting to feel like. Enforcing the rules is starting to make girls feel self-conscious about what they wear, and many girls are feeling that they're being shamed by their own teachers. Fashion is freeing, and when asking teachers why other students can wear dog collars and tails to each their own, they're saying that it's their self-expression. Is my clothing not self-expression because it's on trend? I came to PV from a Catholic school after being in uniform for eight years. Drawl to PV was, was finally being able to express myself through clothing, um, after years of dressing like other people. What I hadn't anticipated was the confidence that that builds. Suddenly, in the past week, as I walk through the halls, I feel like I'm being judged by my own educators. Now, after speaking with multiple teachers on this subject, they inform me that it's not their doing. It's the handbook, so I'm here to questioning, I'm here to question the reasoning for this dress code. Why would one think that the way that I wear my clothes would affect the way that I or those around me are learning? Uh, clothing's not only my way, but many students' ways of self-expression. On August thirty-first, I was pulled from one of my classes to the office and not given a reason. This was a first for me. Um, I missed over fifteen minutes of class for a principal to tell me to zip up my hoodie. What I'm trying to get across is that clothes or not is what is disrupting the class, it's the dress code. What I'm asking of you all is to reassess the priorities in the handbook for this school. In all honesty, I find the dress code to be incredibly outdated as well as sexist. What this is doing is enabling the sexual, the sexualization of young girls. Um, I appreciate and understand the concern for our safety, but an inch gap between my shirt and my pants is not dangerous for those around me. I'm in a place, I'm in my place of education, a place that constantly pushes for individualism and self-expression, for us to be leaders. So, here I am. I'm going to question authority when I feel that it's necessary, that's what this school has taught me. But if you want a school with leaders, you need to allow them a safe place to grow as individuals, and respect, and restricting our self-expression will only prohibit our creativity. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public? Student liaisons report, uh, Mr. Schaefer.
Uh, hello, welcome back. Before we, before, I have a slideshow, but before we do that, I want to reflect, uh, what Shannon said, because it's something that I've heard a lot this week, um, from all over the place. Freshmen, juniors, seniors, sophomores, girls, boys, everybody has been talking about, um, our dress code. And I do want to bring, you know, I'm currently not in a position to give you any language that we should look at, but I will say that I was looking at the board docs and we had, the last time we reviewed the dress code was twenty nineteen, and the last time it was revised was two thousand and ten. To put that into perspective, I haven't, I wasn't in the school in two thousand and ten. So, we're going off a language from two thousand and ten, you know. I have to follow language from, I wasn't even, you know, here. So, that's, that's all I have for that. We can, you know, just, I would love to have a conversation with more students, uh, teachers and administrators later about that topic. Um, hopefully that can stem from this. But my actual presentation here, uh, is a welcome back presentation. Uh, this is our first meeting since we've had students, uh, in the building. I would say mi, like minus this morning. Uh, everything's gone very smoothly. Uh, this was actually before school even started, this was before the first day of school. Uh, it's hard to see, but this is our link crew and all of the freshmen, the class of twenty twenty-six. Um, so the link crew is a group of, uh, juniors and seniors that are leaders, basically, you know. They, they get with the freshmen, um, before school starts, they give them tours, they tell them everything great about this school, and then periodically throughout the year, we will meet with them, uh, catch up, say, you know, how's it going? Are you struggling with anything, you know, how are your classes going? It's just a, it's a good way to bridge the upperclassmen and the incoming class, so that when seniors like I leave, um, we don't have classes that are completely in the dark about things. Next slide. And this brings us to the first day of school. Um, you know, our freshmen were very excited. I, I think they were very excited, I can't speak for them, but they seemed very excited to be in the hallways. It was, you could see that look of, you know, this is new on their faces. It could have been a little frightening, but, uh, they seemed to enjoy it. Uh, all the upperclassmen seemed to also enjoy it, um, so, first day went smooth in my opinion. Next slide. Uh, this brings me to our fall play, which name I don't know because I missed it on the announcements this morning. I'm a little upset about it, but I know that, uh, auditions were today and callbacks are in a week. I didn't get to put my name in the hat for auditions, and there's no next year, so you get, I guess you missed that one. But, uh, yes, fall play, auditions were today, so more news on that coming soon. Next slide. And then, um, these are, I know they're again hard to see, but these are our sports teams, and they're not all of them, but these are all the pictures that I, uh, had. I'm going to defer to Mr. Felty's newsletter on this one, but I believe every scr, every team on the screen right now has won a game in the last week, uh, and including football's on the next slide. But I think that's very telling of our athletic department here. We do a fantastic job as far, I mean, our students work so hard, um, in athletics, and I don't have pictures of them, but I also want to shout out the band, who absolutely did phenomenal, um, at the two, last two games, uh, last Friday nights, and the cheerleaders. That, those three components of the team, the band, the cheerleaders, and I'll add the student section, they meshed so well at all sports, and, uh, it's just a great atmosphere, you know, to be at. Next slide. Uh, and this is football. So, uh, last Friday was our, um, autism awareness and life skills game. Uh, we wore baby blue, which you'll see in the next, uh, picture, but our football team played their hearts out. Uh, it was one of the best games I've seen here. Uh, credit to Coach Heist and, and their team for coming back down so, so big in the first half, uh, and getting that PV spirit and coming back and winning it, uh, which leads me to my next slide. That is our student section. Uh, yes, that is me in the front, uh, wearing a tie with a basketball jersey. It's a little crazy, but, uh, this is our student section. Um, we pride ourselves at Park Valley having, not officially, but officially, the number one student section in Pennsylvania. It says on the bulletin board down the str, down the hallway, so it must be true. Um, we have a great student body here, and they love to support any and all students. Um, you can see it not just at sports, uh, at band competitions, which I know there's some big band competitions this year, and there will be a large student section present for that. Um, and, and plays, there's always a lot of students, and it always has kind of surprised me, bless you. Um, but we have a fantastic student section, and I put this slide in here mainly to bring up something Dr. Russell and I talked about at the game. Couple weeks back, the board passed a, uh, well, passed, I don't know what we call it, but they passed it. Uh, it, it was for us to partner up with a consulting firm called Biggest Fan. And at the time, there were a lot of questions about, you know, does it work? Uh, are we paying a lot of money just for, you know, whatever, just for students to be student section leaders? But, uh, as a student section leader, I can tell you, we've met three times with this consulting firm, which deals solely with high school and college student sections, which seems like a very small thing, but it's a big thing. Um, we've met three times in the summer, and twice so far, I have a meeting tomorrow about it, uh, where we learn how to be a positive collaborative student section. In the past, we've had some issues with being negative. Um, that means chanting at referees, chanting at other bands, chanting at other players, and this year, we said, no more. We are going full in on positivity towards our players, our coaches, our band, our cheerleaders, and every one of our students. So, this game, I think, was probably our best example yet of the effectiveness of this program. Um, before this game, we game planned with the people at Biggest Fan. You know, how do we get a Friday night to be fun and be exciting and still be very, very respectful? And so they helped us along with this, and, Dr. Russell can attest to this because we talked about it at the game. This game went very, very, very well, uh, in means of the stands. So, I just wanted to point out that that program was very beneficial to, uh, our student section, and I think it'll lay groundwork for, um, students to come. Next slide. This is a last minute addition, but I do want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, uh, and, and all of the staff for this morning, uh, handling it so well. Uh, I know it was unpredicted, you know, we didn't know we were going to lose power at the high school. Uh, but the response from Dr. Russell and her team, getting, we got two emails in a matter of minutes, which I, as a student, is very nice because I didn't have to hear it from my parents who were at work. I got to see it right in my email. Uh, this is the schedule, this is the situation, and that was something we talked about last year. Um, was communicating with not only the parents, but the students about stuff like this. So, I want to thank the administration team, our teachers, and everybody for being very flexible and being very, uh, communicative with this matter. Uh, that's all I have, thank you very much. I know it was long-winded, but it's September, that's what we're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you for a tremendous report. Uh, president's report, I have nothing. Uh, superintendent's report, Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And if I may, I'd like to begin with a response. First of all, Matt, thanks for the thanks, and you're right, we, that was unpredictable this morning, but everybody did a great job in responding, and I very much appreciate it from administrative, administration's point of view as well. But I'd like to follow up you and Shannon, and, and wonder if maybe we can set up a meeting to have a conversation about dress codes. I'll reach out to you, Shannon, and we can come together and talk a little bit prior to the policy committee meeting, which is the actual, that's a good forum for us to talk about something like this that ends up in the handbook. But in advance of that, we can have a preliminary conversation, and we can invite high school administration as well, okay? But I appreciate you standing before the board and sharing your views, thank you. For my report tonight, I have four points of interest that I'd like to touch upon. I'll echo just a little bit of what Mr. Schaefer mentioned, but we've had a great start to the school year, and I want to highlight that along with another accolade, what we're doing in mathematics, and then some updates to Act fifty-five around school safety and student mental health. So, our year started with us welcoming five thousand ten students on August twenty-ninth. As of today, we had five thousand twenty-five. So, we had some individuals that registered a little bit late, but we welcomed them nonetheless, and our students have done a great job in just getting right back into the routines of school, as have our staff, and very appreciative of that. I wanted to give a shout out to Middle School East. They have recently been recognized for their advancements under that positive behavioral support framework. We talk about PBIS, and that's one way that we're really trying to support positive school cultures in school. It's a framework that really focuses on not only poor choices on the part of students, but really on the positive and good choices that they make, and the reinforcement that can actually help our students recognize how they build upon those good choices. So, East was recognized, they will present at a conference, an upcoming conference in Hershey, and they'll get a nice banner to hang in their building. It takes a lot of diligent and dedicated work to reach this point. All six of our schools are working at some point along the continuum on implementing this framework in their schools. The high school has moved in the direction of restorative practices, but all are really working diligently to, to nurture that positive school environment, that inclusive school community. So, kudos to Middle School East and their efforts. So, what are we doing in math? I want to take us back to the shared values. I want to continue to highlight those this year in what I share with you, and how what I share connects to our shared values. So, why is it meaningful to our students, these items that I bring up, these points of interest that I focus upon? In this most recent comprehensive plan, the two thousand twenty-two version, there are additional goals that were articulated and really focused on. The state tends to revise that application and some of the information that they request of school districts. So, in the work that Mrs. Smith actually completed as she filled in that electronic application and template, we also had to identify some goals that make sense for our district based upon the needs of the students in our district. Math proficiency is a goal area, and you'll hear a little bit more tonight about some of the efforts we're making, we're putting forth in the area of math. Not only have we implemented MTSS frameworks in our schools with facilitators, and administration is very appreciative of those resources, those human resources, but we'll talk a little bit about some resources tonight that will support student achievement and growth in the area of math. It's a major focus across the district this year. There have been some recent updates under Act fifty-five that really focus on school safety. I just want to give you the thirty thousand foot view, superintendents, and you may have had access to this information, um, from individuals or representatives of the state, but there are updates that school districts must consider and implement, um, based on Act fifty-five. And first of all, we need a school safety and security coordinator, and we have that in Mr. Miller. We also have professional development requirements we're reminded of. They are articulated here that our staff must participate in, receive, and there are specific timelines for which those professional development opportunities need to occur. We need a threat assessment team. You know that we have a threat assessment team district-wide. The goal this year is to develop threat assessment teams also at the building level with open communication from buildings to that district-wide threat assessment team. And then you'll hear a little bit about the grant programs, and these are part of some of the statutes that were passed this summer. There's a grant around school safety and security. Mr. Weaver will present some information around some of the considerations we're making. With the one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars the district has been awarded in that category, you'll also hear from Dr. Boyd about some school mental health resources that we are seeking. Again, with a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars through this grant program that came through PCCD. So, just some additional, um, details. Under that school safety and security, um, Mr. Miller is obligated to participate in mandated training, and we make sure that he is up to date in what is expected. They're going to update they, by, by they, I mean, PCCD. They're updating the standards by the end of this month, and will inform district coordinators what's expected of them. They have one year to complete that training. This slide shares with you, and again, you can come back and look at it, some of the professional development that our staff must participate in and receive. Two hours of, in terms of annual training, and one hour of that emergency training. Um, some of the emergency response protocols that we reference, and those responses that we practice. So, again, they're a part of what's expected on the part of our staff. Most of our schools this year opened with a faculty meeting that was focused on safety. We also offer the trauma-informed approaches, behavioral health awareness, de-escalation, CPI training, the appropriate ways to restrain a child, et cetera, suicide and bullying awareness, as well as substance abuse awareness. So, we are mandated to provide these opportunities to our staff, and they must take two hours of annual training. Threat assessment is that team that we referenced. It's really a guiding team, I just want the public to know, as well as the board, some of the work of the threat assessment team, it's multidisciplinary, it's multi-focused. There are lots of different events that would fall under the category of threat, and this team continues to learn, it's very diverse, and it's made up of really a variety of employees from our school district with different skill sets and areas of expertise that come together to really analyze threats, and then talk about how we respond. That's really what that threat assessment team does. And also, all of those steps in between that involve communication, uh, as well as recovery from a major threat. So, attempting to be very proactive as we uphold safe and supportive schools, and continue this work at the building level in the upcoming year. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Russell. Solicitor's report, Mr. Subers, do you have anything?
I have no report.
No report. Any board members have any, uh, district committee reports they'd like to give? Move on to consentage, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items will be added to consentage, to the consent agenda for approval at September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two board meeting, seven point oh one through six, eight point oh one through eight point oh six. Education, Mr. Keenan?
All right. Education committee of the whole. And we have, starting with, uh, I mean, should I get into the handout or I hand it over to Laurie?
Hand it over.
Laurie. Laurie.
Good evening, everyone. We actually have a couple of voices that you're going to hear from this evening for the Education Committee of the whole, but I did include two pictures on here. We had induction in August, and we had our new staff create a meme of how they were feeling on induction, and I just really liked these two. We got this, and I'm super excited to be here, and it was an amazing group of new staff, and we're really excited for them to join us. But just a reminder, since this is our second time of doing Education Committee of the whole, our purpose is really to engage in some conversation regarding the topics and encourage our public to also join in that conversation. We will again pause after each particular topic to see if there are any comments, and then tie that to the agenda items for you. So Dr. Boyd is actually going to lead the first three items, and then myself, Mrs. O'Sullivan and Dr. Sax will be leading the last three items. So, Dr. Boyd, it's yours.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the triennial assessment that's reflective of the wellness policy. We did initiate the conversation in our Wellness Committee in the spring, and had intended to come back to the Wellness Committee in May with some information, but if you recall, we were doing a wellness, I made a loss, a symposium, yes. And so we didn't, did not circle back to the triennial assessment. So the triennial assessment requires that we, at least every three years, take a look at the implementation of our wellness policy and look at a variety of topics. And some of those topics are really about our compliance with federal and state regulations, our nutrition education, the staff training that results in that, our physical education, how we engage the community, the access that we offer to food and beverage across the school day, and it also addresses fundraising in the policy. So the assessment asks a variety of questions, and it breaks it down by level, elementary, middle, and high school. So we shared that with our administrators and asked them for feedback. And what we found were, in areas of strength, we had, you know, physical education, our physical activity, activity, I'm sorry, physical activity, our school nutrition compliance, as well as our practices, our operating procedures. There are some areas that we noticed inconsistencies, whether it was across all levels or between levels, and that included nutrition education, the communication that we have with our community and our families, as well as what we're doing in the cafeterias to encourage consumption of whole grains, fruits, vegetables, and then decreasing plate waste. So these topics, we need to come back and have conversations with staff in the buildings, and what we would like to do, we know we do need to post the assessment results. We spoke with Dr. Parr, and she has posted that, so it is on our website for access to our community. Our next steps will be forming a committee with representation from our Physical Education Department, our nurses, our food service, health and wellness staff, administration, as well as curriculum and instruction supervisors, so that we can review that information and take a look in terms of what action steps do we need to take, and make sure that we're compliant, and improving those areas for the wellness of our students and our staff. Does anyone have any questions about that information?
I just want to remind, for people that are here for the first time, the public can also ask questions. No? All good?
So the next item is the PCCD School Mental Health Grant, which we had to submit by the 31st, and it is coming to the board this evening for approval. The funds, as Dr. Russell mentioned, is $176,000, eight hun, I'm sorry, 832. And we're looking for a variety of services that will support trauma and social and emotional wellness and learning for our staff and students. Again, this came out of Act 55, and they established baseline criteria. So there were tiers of criteria that has to be met. Tier one supports have to be met first before we can move into tier two and tier three. And when we looked at all of that criteria, we met all of tier one. We've met most of tier two and tier three, but the areas that we need to focus on is expanding trauma-informed care, a trauma-informed plan, as well as social and emotional learning for everyone. And so what this here represents is that our foundational needs, the tier one, we've met those things like, do we have school nurses in our buildings, counselors, social workers to support our students. What you see in the pillars are the areas that we're asking for in the grant, which would be curricular resources, direct services for students in the form of a mental health counselor, professional development district-wide. So again, as mentioned per Act 55, there was those requirements around training for faculty, and some of that was around trauma-informed care, suicide prevention, bullying awareness. In that professional learning district-wide, that would also help to fulfill some of those requirements and further expand the knowledge of our staff. The professional learning building level would be in the form of, what we're looking for is coaching sessions. So there's the ability to have coaches that work with our counseling team, work with our administrators, and then further develop the actions that we're taking in the classroom. How do we handle situations? How do we support our students? And then that way, again, it fosters greater capacity within our staff. So that information has broken out here. The trauma and social and emotional training, which would be for all staff, is approximately $5,000. And again, that would be three-to-four-hour training that we would do with all staff. The student support counselor would be across the district. They would be able to support our students that have needs. The cost of that would be approximately $90,000. The coaching sessions by building level is $70,000, and the way we looked at that was $10,000 per building, because each building has different needs, that that way we could target the needs within the buildings. And then curricular resources, what was not used in those other areas, we could then purchase resources that we may need to support across the district. And then to circle back to this, and I'll also ask Mrs. Smith if she has anything to add, but if you recall, in the SOR III, there was money allocated for the Supervisor of Health and Wellness, which we have not been able to fill, and we have that balance remaining Mrs. Smith, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I would just add to say that, given what is being recommended for the PCCD grant, that these are now funds then in SOR that we allocated that we could consider for other things, mental health-related, or something else that would fit the SOR grant.
Thank you. Are there any questions about that information?
I do have a question in regards to, I know we've had some discussion in the past, and I'm gonna mess up the program name, but looking into some, weaving in some anti-bullying. I know we're into restorative practice, and we want to really keep the positive behavior, but we talked a little bit, is it Alias? I can never say it.
Alveus.
Alveus, I can never get it right. Or something similar. Has there been any more thought into doing that and trying to weave back in that bullying component in addition to everything else we're doing?
So I know that when Mrs. Smith speaks, there's going to be some curricular work around health and wellness. We have talked about PBIS and what we're doing there, but those curricular resources, we could look at Alveus if that is something that we need to, you know, look to purchase in terms of supporting what we're doing. I do know that we also utilize second steps at the elementary level for health and wellness. That program also extends into the secondary level, and that could be something else that we could look at. But yes, that money is allotted so that we can look at for resources should they be needed.
With the coaching sessions, the building-level coaching sessions, who would be doing those?
So we've looked to several organizations. We're talking with Mission Kids, we're talking with Lakeside Neurologic Services. There are several out there that have different levels of support, but it would be someone that has that licensure, has that trauma-informed background, that training, that they could then turn, turn around and work with our staff. So we have not selected a provider at this point in time.
One, an additional question, just on the next one, we were just talking about the staff and for the health and wellness supervisor. Is there any reason that they seem to be so difficult to find? I mean, this has been something that the search has been going on for years.
Yeah, we've been through three rounds of actually going out and recruiting individuals, The candidate that we felt was probably the strongest of the three rounds was one whose salary we just could not match, and that was somewhat of a unique situation. In the other two rounds, we did not feel that we had the just-right person for this role, and it's a critical role. We had initially wanted to go out and recruit someone with a clinical flair to their work that could complement the school counseling that we offer our students, and had a lot of difficulty finding somebody that we felt would meet the needs of our students and our staff in that regard. So maybe salary and maybe resources. These resources just seem to be very challenging to find. You know, there, there aren't a lot of them around. So what we thought we would do is propose to bring in this contracted supervisor, if you will, or consultant that can work for a year with us from an organization that does offer expertise in this area, to provide a level of guidance. And then we thought we would go out again in February or so to try and recruit somebody again. February just seems to be, in our conversations, a better time to invite someone to apply for an administrative position, as opposed to, say, September or even the summer. So we thought we would try and invest the monies in this way, learn some things from any individuals that come in and provide any of these services, and then again, pursue our own individual late winter.
Set of curiosity, great song. What was the salary differential?
It was $20,000 with the last employee.
That, is that all in, or no?
What do you mean by that? I'm sorry.
That's all, and includes peezers and everything? It was just a $20,000 changeover?
It was a great salary.
Okay.
District counter person said, okay. It was $20,000 different.
I just want to clarify, we, you're suggesting that we no longer look for a health and wellness supervisor at this point, and use the mental health enhancement funding to support what that person was gonna do?
Right now, we're suggesting just for this year, and to go out again in February to try and fill that position at Supervisor of Health and Wellness. Now, we do anticipate learning from contracting with somebody who consults from an organization like Lakeside or, what did you mention?
Mission Kids.
Mission Kids, thank you. However, we, we are considering pursuing that open position again at a time when we believe we're more likely to get a stronger pool of candidates.
So how does that free up the money?
Well, that's a good question. We also talked about, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, it frees up the money in that it was budgeted in SOR for the '21, '22, and '22, '23. We had always had the intention to build it into the district budget for '23, '24. So if we continue to operate under that, that this position would be built into the budget in '23, '24, then those funds are available. Should the board want to use those funds to cover the '23, '24 salary, if we can hire somebody, we could certainly do that with it. Those funds have to be expended by, I believe, June of 2024. I'm looking at my colleagues, yeah.
And so we'll at least save half of this year's salary again on top of last year's.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just not seeing in this what we have discussed the health and wellness supervisor needs to do. So I hope that we still are really looking for that person.
So if we found, just, can't go backwards in time, but just on the hypothetical, you found someone that you really liked, but their ask was $20,000 more, there was no way to find $20,000 somewhere from the budget, whether it was anywhere, pull from, if this is such an important position to fill...
Can I, having been part of, that then affects every other administrator's salary. To bring in someone new at that high of a level, when we've had administrators here for years that wouldn't be making that.
But they're not new, they're only new to this school.
But I would, I would have responded the same way. We have a structure, and we're really trying to bring system to the salary schedule for Act 93 individuals, and this individual coming in as a supervisor would have been way above our other supervisors, and that doesn't bode well for our culture or feel fair to some of our other administrators. It is a demanded position. Other districts are looking for these resources, and they're few and far between, unfortunately. So we do plan, we recognize the need for it, we continue to talk about it. This is a Band-Aid, and we're hoping that we have better luck late winter.
And I'll also just add that it was not worth an extra $20,000. I think we had changed some of our description, because this person was good wasn't everything we were looking for. So if we were gonna add another $20,000 into the position, that would be putting the whole thing out there again and seeing who that attracted.
Well, funny thing is, the market dictates itself, so that could be why we're not filling the position.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with that. I, but there are these parameters that we want to make every effort to operate within to be respectful of our other administrators, as Mrs. Evans-Brocket pointed out. And going back to her most recent point, we did revise the job description, and the board, it was brought back to the board, the board approved it. So we had originally gone out for that clinical flair, if you will, clinical skill set to complement our school counselors and their skill set, and it was really difficult to find somebody who was the just-right person, we felt, for our district with that skill set. So we haven't given up, but we have had difficulty finding that person. So we'll see what this consultant, this contractor might offer us, and then we plan to go out again in February or so.
How far off, because to Miss Evans-Brocket's point, how far off is what they're offering to what we kind of were looking to hire?
Uh, what, who's offering? I'm sorry.
So how far off are the specs for what the counselor's gonna do for the district compared to what we assumed the wellness supervisor would be doing on a day in, day out?
Okay, so we, we would like the supervisor to actually supervise our counselors and our social workers, and bring consistency and standardization K-12 across the district. Right now, they all operate in ways to support students, but we're not sure we're all operating in the same ways to support our students, and we want to bring that standardization and more of a proactive approach as opposed to reactive, and we believe with leadership, we're more likely to do that. So that's really the purpose. And counselors have become such critical employees of the school district in support of our students and our staff and their work with students, that we want to lead them most effectively. So that's really the purpose of the role. In addition, we did talk about the individual in this role also modeling for our counselors some best practices, some different practices that they may not be employing at this point, but can be really effective with kids. Group sessions, for example, in some of the upper grades would be an example of that.
I would just say that this position, one of the big differences is they're going to be in the role of a consultant. They won't be able to do any of that supervisory component that we would be looking for with someone who takes on the administrative role. The other thing to consider is, when you're looking for that clinical flair, those are people who already work in private practice, already work in the clinical world, they're not in the education sector, which is, it's really its own, you know, it's, it kind of beats to its own drum, and it has its own set of rules, and, and it makes it difficult to bring somebody that's in the private sector to public school. It's also difficult to take somebody who's used to being in public school and put them in the private sector. It's just two different worlds, and right now, unfortunately, that area of psychology and counseling, whether it be private sector or the school sector, is very minimal as far as the amount of people that are going into the field. We are definitely in a crunch as far as the number of people that are even out there that hold the credentials we need.
I would have to agree with what you're talking about. However, I would also say that it does exist, and for me, it existed for 40 years, in both private as well as school. And it does exist, and I do agree, I think that it needs to have that mental health flair, because it is such a strong bridge between the two. But then, somebody with an educational background and a mental health background, I understand
Just to further answer your question about the difference, I think too, is when you have someone that we would bring in as an administrator, you're gonna form those relationships that we want this role to have with our students, with our staff, versus a consultant, I just... I just don't think that relationship and that connection is the same.
Are there any other comments or questions? Yes.
So can you go ahead a slide? So as a student, how would I, like, how could I utilize the student support counselor?
So part of that responsibility would be coming from our school counselors to potentially identify students that may have needs, or we could be working with families, and it would be able to provide some counseling supports and services to our students in need, yes.
Gotcha.
And just, you know, we do work with outpatient providers in our schools, and if you recall, last year, three of our elementary schools did not receive that outpatient support because they could not find a provider. We are in conversations with Child and Family Focus. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about providers for the elementary schools, so we're hoping that that will get back on track. But that ability to also meet with students is a need that we know exists. So while we know that these grant monies aren't necessarily finding us a supervisor of health and wellness, it will allow us to address some of the mental health and well-being of our kids that we know we're experiencing right now.
Is it possible that this could also be stretched over slightly to support the mental health of our staff?
Yes, which again is why we didn't specifically call out, you know, it's just going to be counseling services. We didn't articulate that specific. We did want to really capture it in a way that we start with all. So we know that our staff, they always, they have questions around trauma. What is trauma-informed? How do I support students? We see kids walking through our doors with all different kinds of trauma, and not every student is alike. So how do we support our staff and give them a skill set so when they're in their classrooms, they're teaching, or they're seeing something, they can begin to recognize and then offer recommendations or reach out to the counselor? So again, that idea that starting with all and then that pyramid of developing supports so that we can strengthen the knowledge base that we have among our staff and provide supports that we know that our students and families potentially need.
Yeah, on to that, I was talking about is more the staff who themselves may have also experienced that same trauma, especially if it is something that's a trauma with the student, because they will feel it very, very acutely.
And we can absolutely use that, the support counselor, district-wide, and make it accessible for our staff as well. I would agree with that. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? And so last month, I came to the board and shared information about transition services, so I'd like to provide an update with where we are. We shared what our current vocational experiences are for our students. Excuse me. And then we talked about some of the things that we're exploring. So with cafeteria work opportunities, I'd like you to know that that's up and moving forward. We're working with Mrs. Yaksis in the food service department here at the high school to identify what are those tasks that our students can help to perform. She has spoken with the food service department, and as they come back, they're using the first two weeks really just to acclimate back to the school setting. Our special education teachers are looking at our students who could work in the cafeteria, and then we're coming back together to identify that and move that forward. We presented to you possibility of working with the district mail run. That has some challenges associated with it, which I'll go into in a few minutes. We also talked about our own apartment program here in Perkyman Valley by renovating the FCS space, and I have an update on that as well, as well as then the community-supported experiences. So that's in the future, but I'll share with that, with you, that information with you in a moment. Again, if you recall, last month, we did a comparison. So last school year, we did comparisons, we gathered information, we went out, we looked at some districts that have transition programs. And what I'm calling out here is the fact that the other districts have actual positions that support this work. Here at Perkyman Valley, we currently do not. If we want to grow this program, we do need to have a conversation about the staffing that would be needed to grow the program. So when we look at the district mail run, if we want to expand anything beyond the high school, we're going to need staffing to do that. Right now, across the district, we're currently down somewhere between 12 to 16 paraprofessionals for the special education department. We've been trying to fill positions for approximately two years. We have standing, a standing appointment every other week where we do interviews for anyone that applies. The position remains active on the website, but it's just very difficult to secure paraprofessionals. So we don't have extra staff. We don't have current paraprofessionals that we could say, sure, they could supervise our students as they go out on the mail run across the district. We have talked with transportation. We've put that on hold right now, but they do have a van that we could potentially use to have a mail run. We're taking a look at student schedules. Our teachers have identified four to six students that could participate, and their schedule would allow them to support this and to do this work. But the challenge is really the lack of staffing. With the PV apartment program, independent living, this is a little bit more long-term. We did meet with Mr. Fabrizio, we took a look at the space, and what we're working on now is drawing up some plans in terms of what would we need. So that's a time commitment, and it's also going to require some renovations. So we have to look at, we have to draw up the plan, look at costs, and our recommendation would be is that we try to do that work when students are not in session, so most likely in the summer. I know I'll be talking with Mr. Weaver because we then have to talk about where does the money come from to support something like this. So stay tuned for that. So again, the challenges that exist there, we know we have a timeline, we're working on that. We want to ensure the minimal disruptions for our students in the building, but we do know that we need to identify costs and then bring that forward to the board. Community partnerships, this is something that we can begin to develop this year. While we don't have the supports necessarily to take our students maybe out into the community, it is something that we're looking to do to establish those partnerships so that we can look at the 23, 24 school year and potentially move our students off campus or out of the district into the community with some opportunities. Again, it's going to require staffing to support the students so that they're supervised when they're at work sites. And then we will need to also look at transportation, contracting with STA versus, does it make sense to purchase a district vehicle to use for that purpose? So again, more conversation will come around that. And what we're really looking to do is we see the need to create a job coach position. If we want students to leave the high school, even just to move across the district, we need a job coach. We can secure transportation, that's not a problem, but it's the job coach position that's really holding us back. We have started to work on what a job description would look like, and we can bring that to the board. We'll be working and talking with Mr. Moran about what would that salary look like, and those would be the next steps is to bring that to the board and then look to see if we can find funding to hire a job coach for this school year. And then that way, we could, again, expand across the district with services. You can see for the 23, 24 school year, that's where we would look to talk about a transition coordinator that would help to manage this much more broadly. And hopefully, we would be able to initiate an apartment program in the district by next school year. So other questions and comments? Yes.
Ms. White, go ahead.
I'm wondering, Dr. Boyd, if there, for the job coach piece of what you've just discussed, has there been any conversation with the relationships that we've already started to establish with Integrate for Good, for example, and utilizing some of the connection and infrastructure that's set up with that organization to, I guess, to kind of maybe contract with a stipend of some sort to provide some of the manpower for these services?
We have not worked with Dr. Weinberg on that, but that's a very, very good recommendation, so that is something we can certainly explore, and I can bring information back.
Can you explain a little bit more how you envision, sorry, this job coach, what you see the job coach actually would be, what would their responsibilities be?
So the job coach would work with the students not only to help supervise, but help them to acquire the skills on the job. They would be, you know, facilitating and stepping back, sort of that guide on the side, so to speak, but then supervising the students when they're outside of the classroom setting because the classroom teacher would not be there.
Okay, so, but it would be onsite, because I'm hearing you say we are struggling finding paras or aides to go offsite, so I'm just trying to understand how, the thought process behind just getting it all to work together.
So our paraprofessionals typically support our students in their academic setting, and oftentimes at the high school, they're shared support. So if I'm a paraprofessional, I may support two or three students. Those two or three students may not necessarily all be going out to a job site. So paras, it's difficult to, and I'm a step ahead of everyone, but oftentimes, people might say, well, why couldn't we just use paras to go along and support our students? Right now, we're short-staffed, so we don't have enough paras to be able to pull off and have them go out. As you see here, what other districts do utilize when students go out into either the community or across the district, they utilize job coaches. So the job coaches work specifically on that skill set, they work on helping the students to develop the skill set, and then allow them to implement, step back, offer guidance as needed. And so that's what we're looking for, is really a delineation that when we're talking about transition programming and having our students go out into some sort of a work environment, that there's a job coach there that's able to take a look at that skill set, help to refine it, fine-tune it, and improve it, whereas the paraprofessionals are supporting here in the school setting.
My question would be, looking at the paraprofessionals, I know we did kind of a district comparison when we were talking about substitutes and how we could be, you know, how we could really draw people to want to be part of the Perkyman Valley District. Where are we with, looking at that with, in districts as far as paraprofessionals? Are we competitive? Are we drawing people? Or is the pool just, in general, I know in all fields, really shallow right now?
I think it's a combination. I think the pool is shallow. I can tell you that the feedback that I continue to hear is that we don't pay enough. Other districts pay more than us. Now, is that accurate? Again, I can talk with Mr. Moran, we can probably get a comparison from other districts, but I know that that's something that we have heard.
So if you have a shallow pool, plus you're not paying, that means the little bit that's out there looking for work is going to go to the higher bidder. So I think it's definitely an area that should be investigated so that we can ensure that, you know, teachers and students alike are supported.
The only thing I'd like to offer, you know, in the district's defense, if you will, is in the last contract negotiations, there was significant movement forward in that regard and substantial comparisons made among the districts in Montgomery County. And there was a real step forward and collaborative approach in terms of a salary schedule. So it's not probably where some others are, but the board really did make an effort to take a step forward. So we do have some of that data, and we continue to look at it and hope that we'll continue to make that forward movement. However, at the same time, there is a real shallow pool too, you know, as you mentioned with medical or mental health, excuse me, human resources, the same seems to be true with paras. This role, this job coach, would be potentially in a different category or employee group. So as Dr. Boyd mentioned, the role would be delineated from a paraprofessional, and maybe for that reason, could become more attractive and justify a different salary.
Mr. Dore?
Are any of these three examples using contracted services, or are they all staff positions?
They are all staff positions, yes.
And would the job coach maybe hopefully have the skill set to work with OVR, right? I mean, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation will for students 18 to 21. If they help them move through the process of, you know, going through the process of trying to secure their own job coach, then this student could have that support out onsite while during the school day with a job coach that the district isn't paying for.
Yes, and that would lead us into then also the transition coordinator that oftentimes, again, those districts also have, many of them have transition coordinators that then coordinate some of those services with other agencies so that we can support students, again, once they leave Perkyman Valley. Are there any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So a couple of short topics here, and then we'll spend the bulk of the rest of the time on curriculum items, but enrollment updates. Agenda 4.08 is our typical monthly enrollment report, but I did want to point out and just provide an update for you on our Viking Academy enrollments. As you know, we have seen this number decline over the course of last school year and thought it would be helpful to just show you a comparison, how we're starting the year. So we did end the year with 105 students in Viking Academy K-12, and now we have, I don't have my glasses on, so that's a number in the twenties. Thank you. I didn't know it was a nine or a zero from here. Thank you. So 29, so you can see a significant decrease there. And, you know, I think the decision that the board made with our elementary synchronicity program was certainly in the right direction, given the numbers of students that we still have enrolled. And then that also brought up the question of, well, how does that compare to our cyber charter enrollment, and are we seeing increases or decreases there? So typically, this is something that we show around October because that's our official enrollment time, but I am giving you a comparison of the last couple of years of October enrollment, and then also March of '22 and September of '22. These are only the cyber charters. This does not include, at least the chart on the left, the brick and mortars, which we have two, Renaissance and Sauterton CS Collaborative. They are included on the right in the red, though, which you can see remains pretty steady. And you can see, we're seeing similar, just like we saw spikes in our own virtual, we saw a spike in virtual during the pandemic, and cyber charters have, again, decreased there as well. Any comment on any of the enrollment pieces?
I know we're not looking at within buildings in these slides, but hearing about the paraprofessional difficulty, I know that Evergreen's third grade class, we had conversations that they're at max or over, and that there was going to be somebody assigned to their grade level to help as like a paraprofessional. From my knowledge, there hasn't been somebody assigned, I'm assuming maybe because of staffing, but I know there is still concern that's been reported to me about the size of the classes and the lack of support, so I didn't know where we were on that.
Go ahead.
I can speak to that. So my understanding from Mr. Moran, you've confirmed we have assigned a paraprofessional to third grade at Evergreen, and they are at the upper end of those recommended class sizes per Policy 126. So we do have that. There are other parapositions open in the building, however, we did prioritize. So one class has a co-teacher, a second teacher, along with some supportive staff, and we have assigned a para there permanently to third grade.
Anything else about enrollment? Public?
Okay. Summer Academy, just as we're wrapping up the summer and starting the year, we like to just give you an update of what happened this summer. Summer Academy is offered typically a lot in June and a lot in August for our staff professional development. They are required to have three days or 18 hours of professional development a year, which they can flex. They can take it in the summer, and there are certain days then during the school calendar in which they do not need to report. So just some stats, we had over 5,000 total professional development hours this particular summer with our staff. Fifty-five of those workshops were facilitated by our own staff, and we have amazing staff and sharing their talents, and our staff enjoy learning from their colleagues and collaborating with them. In addition to workshops, there is also an opportunity for them to collaborate where they can create a collaboration around a topic that is important to them and their curriculum and their content and instruction. We had over 60 of those that represented 190 staff members, and then I won't read the list, but you can see what some of the popular sessions were this summer. We did have a required session for all staff for inclusive practices, and then all elementary staff were required to participate in Let's Get It Right, which was a writing workshop. But all of the others listed there were, you know, their choice workshops. I just wanted to show you what some of the top ones were. It was a very successful, again, Summer Academy. We always get feedback from the- We always get feedback from the staff on the workshops, and then as well to help us planning for the next year. Questions or comments on any of that? Okay. So we'll roll into curriculum updates, and Mrs. O'Sullivan and Dr. Sacks are going to join me for some of the slides here and share in the presentation. This does align to items 4.03 and 4.04 on our agenda this evening. So I just wanted to also provide some updates on implementation of things that you approved this past year for this coming year in terms of curriculum guides and resources. We have several new curriculum guides that you approved last year for implementation this year. And just a reminder, the board approves what we call Stage One. We use Understanding by Design, which has three stages of development. Stage One is the what we teach, the standards that we teach, the eligible content, you know, this knowledge and the skills. So all of those areas are, now that you approved Stage One, are moving into stages two and three, which is really getting more into the nuts and bolts of what does the actual unit look like? What are the learning activities? What are the guaranteed experiences, the common assessments? So you can see a list of the courses that you approved that are moving into that. I will point out for you, the Black History and the Nova Lab, just two things on there. Since they are high school courses, I thought I would share with you what the enrollments ended up being in those courses, because they were some of the decisions that you saw the course requests, but now you can see how many students actually were in those classes. And the only other thing I'll point out is that K-5 Library is still working also on redesigning their physical spaces. If you have an opportunity to go to Schwanxville, you will notice that the elementary, really, she has redesigned with some flexible seating, and the other three elementaries will be doing that as well. You even see some of that here in the high school library, as they have done some of that in the past. In terms of resources, you approved a lot last year for implementation this year, lots of different textbooks, some materials for foundations, which is a resource that we use in our primary grades to help our students with learning to read. We are working on implementing that with fidelity and assuring equal resources across all of our classrooms. And then some big purchases were Star Reading, if you remember, was sixth through 12th grades. And just an update on that, we did do a trial assessment of that in all of our sixth to eighth grade classes last spring, so it kind of gave us an opportunity to look at what some of that data looks like and the practice, how long does it take to do the assessment? How do we prepare? That went very well. Staff participated in training then over the summer. We've made sure everybody is trained at this point, and we are ready to actually administer that, I believe, starting next week in some of our classes, and we'll be sending out a district communication to our parents later this week about that, just so they know what to expect. And we will be sharing parent reports when they are available as well. Star Math, you also purchased for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then students in Age 1, 2, and Geometry at the high school. We purchased that a little bit later last spring, so we did not do a trial assessment. We did do staff training, however, this summer, and we are ready to also administer that first assessment in September, I believe, as well, starting in the next week or two. And then Desmos was a purchase for our high school Algebra I. Mrs. O'Sullivan has been working just this past week to ensure that all staff are trained on that, and so that we are moving forward with that implementation in classrooms. And then Read 180 was another purchase of 50 licenses for one year for our secondary students, primarily special education, and Mrs. Aducci and Dr. Boyd have been leading that. We currently have four classes scheduled. They are 45 minutes per day here at the high school. And we currently have, as of last week, we had 40 students out of those 50 licenses that their parents agreed through their IEP process to utilize this particular resource. I talked to Mrs. Aducci just today. We have had one or two more parents that have agreed. We know that we also want to keep a few of those licenses available for flexibility, for move-ins, or for changes when we notice that we're progress monitoring and something's either working or not working, and we want to switch. And we also have a few other parents that they are still continuing to work with, so we anticipate to have, you know, higher in the 40s of those licenses being utilized. We have two teachers trained here at the high school, as well as our MTSS facilitator, and Dr. Sacks has been trained as well. And we will have ongoing data analysis and program implementation. We have further support and training with the Read 180 trainers coming as well. As far as our curriculum reviews, we have a lot planned for '22, '23. We still have some meeting, Mrs. Folks and Mrs. O'Sullivan and I, to determine what's realistic for us to be able to support. But I gave you just an idea of, in addition to all those phases that are now in stages two and three, these are other areas that, at this point in time, should really be reviewed. And you'll see, you know, across the gamut, here's some world languages, ELA, social studies, math, a big one at the secondary level, and then some other elective areas that we continue to look at. So we'll provide more information when we narrow that down as to what, again, will actually be reviewed this year. So then moving into our math action plan, you heard Dr. Russell indicate that math is an area identified in our comprehensive plan, and this slide might look familiar from when we did our January data presentation, and we really used the data to drive out what our identified needs were and recommendation. And our recommendation at that time was to look for a universal screener and a research-based resource to use. And you did already approve the purchase of Star Math, so tonight, we want to talk to you about an additional resource to partner with Star Math. But before I get to that, we are also working on an official action plan for the area of math. What are those steps? Who's responsible for them, and what's the timeline? And what do we hope the outcomes will be? So the four areas that are in the red boxes there are just the overarching areas, and then you can see some things under each one of them that are areas that we want to delve into a little bit more. So we're kind of, you know, cursory, looking at the district right now, and then narrowing that down and working with the individual staff administrators responsible for each of those areas. But we hope to give you periodic updates of how we're progressing in that particular area. But tonight, we're going to focus on resources. And I believe, is this the slide? I'm turning it over to Mrs. O'Sullivan now, in her debut appearance here at an education committee. She is our STEM supervisor and newly joined us in April, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. So, we are talking about Freckle tonight. So as Mrs. Smith mentioned, we purchased Star Math in the spring. You approved it in April. We trained our teachers this summer, and we are set to administer the assessment next week. We will be administering it twice more this year, both in the winter and spring, for all grade levels in our middle school math program, as well as Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. So once we have that data from the Star assessment, we're hoping that that then drives teacher analysis to make decisions in both their lesson planning, instruction, small groups, and individual support for our students. However, we know that's still a barrier for our teachers to provide individual support for every student every day. And so this is where Freckle Math comes in as providing some extra support to provide differentiated learning for each one of our students at the point that they are at. So, Freckle Math, this will be a short introduction video as to what this program will provide.
Freckle is a practice tool directly inspired by the work and dedication of educators like you. We enable K-12 teachers to provide differentiated practice in math and ELA that balances fun with learning. Freckle facilitates student engagement by providing work at the just right level and motivates students to reach their full potential. Most importantly, these lessons deliver real-world scenarios, engaging articles, skills practice, and peer-to-peer support in a positive, personalized learning environment. Teachers and administrators can observe student usage and performance at the classroom or school level in real time. Data is a center point, so that you can make the most of every instructional minute. Freckle is provenly effective to promote student growth and provide remediation for learning deficits. Create lasting learning moments for each and every one of your students.
So, as the video mentioned, this is targeted adaptive practice for students. Star Math will feed right into Freckle to provide that level, and then all learners will benefit. So we have students who might need some extra support and remediation. We have students who are on grade level. That will then be able to practice the standards on grade level, and then we have students that need that push into enrichment. Freckle will be able to provide the whole gamut of that and provide that practice where students are at. Again, this is a product by Renaissance Learning, so we've already purchased that Star Math. It will all feed in together. It also provides some real-world application, as well as constructed response questions. So we're having students practice both that multiple-choice targeted skills practice, as well as that open-ended response that we're looking for to understand, do they understand the concepts behind the skills? And again, Freckle is research-based. We have linked some of their methodology there. It has proven to show growth and mastery with our students, so we're hoping that you will approve this purchase for our middle-level students. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sacks to talk about implementation.
Good evening, everyone. As Mrs. Smith and Mrs. O'Sullivan alluded, and our data shows, it's an area, math is a key area that we need to respond to in a timely manner. Just to give you a little background, last year, due to the absence of a position, and we're thankful that Mrs. O'Sullivan's on board now, that we took the lead on the committee to help bring that process along. So we were working through ELA at the time, talking about resources that supported responding to the data. We also needed to take a look at math data. So as we looked, we needed to pull this committee together. We took secondary mathematics teachers, both from the middle and the high school levels, and put a committee together to begin to review not just screeners, but also in tandem with what works with them. So that resource that will help our students at the next level. So during that review process, we needed to take a look at what actually was going to facilitate that individualized learning that those gaps sometimes get too large in a mainstream classroom in our core instructional practices. So Renaissance's Freckle is that complement that we were looking at that really brought to light with our teachers something that was really usable in the classroom, as well as in addition to the classroom. So the committee really advocated for both products, so that was a conversation that was happening last school year, as we prepared for this evening. One piece that I really wanted to mention is the path and the complement piece of, no matter what the entry point of the learning is for a student, for example, if you have a seventh-grade student working on a fourth-grade foundational skill, what I think is really great about the product, it's adaptive per the age level of the student. So you're not going to have a seventh grader looking at a fourth-grade type screen. It's going to provide them with a seventh-grade type learning screen, so that they don't feel uncomfortable in the process either, as they're trying to build their capacity as a learner. So I think that's a really interesting aspect of the product that really, I think, will support our students in using the product and developing themselves in their learning. Real quickly, before, the implementation schedule is at the bottom, more so specifically. But as we said earlier September, we're looking to roll out the assessments, gain the information, working with building-level teams, and we're actually, we're in team meetings today. We're going to be talking in PLCs as well. The difference between the two is the team in, as all four team teachers, all four content areas versus a content area at a time. So we'll be looking at those pieces and drilling down into the overall data and those connectivity into the classroom. So at this point, we are looking at grades six through eight. Tenth period is an opportunity that we do have at the middle level, that is an advisory period. There are six days to our cycle. So we have identified two of those six days as 30-minute periods that we can have that are uninterrupted by other things and will not actually impede the opportunities for students to participate in other things like music areas, chorus, band and orchestra, and such things like that. So our goal is to have all students have their needs met, no matter where they enter into their learning continuum. Our teachers during that time, those two periods for 30 minutes, are going to be proctoring. The students will be working through their individual paths. And again, myself, as well as our facilitators and math teachers, will be monitoring their usage, as well as their growth that's happening during that time, and whether they are or not, and then next steps of how we respond to that. There are many, many reports, and the goal is to really get in and understand how to maximize the usage of the product and make it so that we can't not have it. So the student-level reports, there's a parent information piece, so we've had discussions on that communication with families, so the parents can learn about where their students are, what this data actually means, and how that gets interpreted into the classroom setting for instructional practices. So it's important, you can take a look at a number all you want, but if we can't turn it around and work with our teachers to implement it well for students, then the product doesn't work. So us working together through our team meetings, through our coaching staff, through our supervisors and myself, really getting into the work and working with and alongside our teachers in the classrooms. So again, the effectiveness, how will we monitor? We have usage reports, we have feedback from teachers, we have feedback from families, right? And then we have the comparative information, not only with, you know, our Star Math and PSSA, but P-VAS, we have that trajectory, and we can measure along that trajectory how it is matching and what that looks like, and are we on target? So those are pieces that will correlate, we'll bring that data together and make sure that we monitor that usage. The beginning of the year, you have one data point to work off of. Come February, we'll have more data for you. But that, we need to have those multiple data points along the way, so that we can show the increase in skills, as well as areas if they're not increasing, what we need to do to respond to that, and other supports we may need to take a look at.
So what we are recommending this evening is a one-year purchase for just the '22, '23 school year, for us to have an opportunity to utilize the program and to look at those tools that we said we're going to use to measure effectiveness, so we can make an informed decision to say if we want to have a multi-year recommendation to use this particular program. We are also only recommending it for grades six, seven, and eight. You might be wondering why. We see that we have needs at the high school in the area of math as well. The high school, at this point in time, doesn't have the structure or the schedule in place to provide an opportunity for these students to have 30 to 60 minutes within a cycle, without taking it out of their math classroom. So we want to look at that first, before we would invest in something that we're not sure we would be able to dedicate the time to. We do have the funds available in our software budget, as we had some other programs that we are no longer using in the software budget, and this would be able to replace those. It also includes eight hours of professional development throughout the year at a cost of slightly over $20,000. And it is Agenda Item 4.03. We'd be happy to entertain any questions for any of us. Ms. Mears?
Do we know of any other districts nearby that are using Freckle? I'm just wondering if we know of anybody close by, and whether they're having success or learn from there.
I don't know off the top of my head. Do either of the two of you know of any districts right around us using it? Radnor has it. What I can share with you is, you know, Linkit is the data warehouse that we've been using for the past several years in the district. They have absolutely, when we said we were moving to Star and possibly towards Freckle, they have seen the same trend with some of the school districts they've worked with. But we could reach out to our salesperson and ask if there's somebody else closer besides Radnor who, you know, maybe is using it that we could learn from. Ms. Evans-Brock?
I think Dr. Sacks addressed this, but I just want to clarify, because the little video we saw was a lot of younger animation, so there is content that's appropriate for the middle school.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
So, I'm just curious.
Do you want, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, if you could state your name and your municipality, I apologize.
My fault.
Hi, Judy Lofton from SkipAC. I am curious if you investigated other programs as well, and what features of this particular program led you to recommend it over the other available programs?
I'll start, and then I'll defer to Dr. Sacks. We certainly did look at other programs. When we did the Star Math, which Dr. Sacks led for us, we were really looking for the universal screener. Many of the companies bring along with them, but this is the program that we then marry with or that we partner with. We used to have ExactPath, which was a product of Edmentum, and one of the things that we found was a stumbling block for us was the logistics of, that was one program, and we used MAP as the universal screener. They were not married together in the same platform, and which creates just some additional logistical issues. logistical issues of an upload and a download, and it's not seamless. So, yes, we did look at other programs. I think that, you know, we're recommending Freckle because of the research component to it, because of all the features that we saw, that we believe outperformed the others, but also that logistical piece of it's a direct connection with Star. So, we're not waiting for a download of a score, and then an upload into Freckle. It seamlessly will adjust that. Is there anything you want to add to that, Dr. Sacks?
We did look at other programming, and the programming was more appropriate for tiered interventions, like we do, like an RTI model at that point, more similar to like a Read 180, like a Math 180. So, we did look at other products. This product in particular, not only does it lend for the extra support, it also allows for the flexibility of the teacher at the classroom level to eventually look at possible small groups and that differentiated approach, in addition to the individualized learning path. So, there's a little bit of a different opportunity there with the original resource.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Sacks, and Mrs. O'Sullivan. The last piece for the Education Committee is the interactive panels, that you have heard quite a bit about from Mr. Ganesh and I. This is just a real quick update on our phased implementation. We purchased 110 of them for Phase 1, are completely installed in our middle schools. That was completed in January, and funded through SR3. Huge kudos to our Technology Department and our Operations Department, as they worked together to install those, 110 across two months, and they did 114 at the high school in about two weeks, two, three weeks, because we didn't have students, so that helped. But, we learned a lot, and they were certainly very efficient with that. You had just approved that for us, and that was completed in August at the high school. We have about 60 of those panels left, that will be installed at the elementaries in here in September. I am meeting with the elementary principals on Monday, to discuss with them where they believe is the best place to start. Do we want to start with our fifth grade classrooms, and work towards our kindergarten, or start with kindergarten and work up? Do we want to start with specials? I really want to get some input from them and the teachers, to see where might be the best place to start. But, it would be the same implementation across all four, so that if one fifth grade gets it, the fifth grades in all four buildings will get it, so that we can collaborate and share the resources that we create on that. So, that's our implementation plan there. That was funded through the technology budget, a lease, and now, we are recommending for you this month, the purchase of the next phase, which is 30 panels, that we budgeted for in the Ready to Learn grant, which you approved, the allocations in August. Those would again be allocated towards the elementary schools, and we would hope to receive and then install them over that December-January timeframe with the break that we have there. Leaves us with about 70 panels left, that we would need to purchase to finish every single classroom in the building, which I can say, to go from, you know, January of 2022, to just, you know, a year later, and have almost every single classroom is pretty impressive, in my opinion, with your support and the departments installing these. We don't have the funding source yet figured out for that, but give us a couple more months, and we'll see how things play out, and we'll come back to you for that potential purchase. So, you will see an item on the Board Agenda this evening, for those next 30, for the computers and the panels together, slightly over 110,000. And again, you approve that to be spent out of Ready to Learn. Questions on the panels? Okay. So, then, we are recommending that Items 4.02, 4.03, and 4.04 be added to the consent agenda, if the Board so chooses. And that ends the Education Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you would turn it off, though, that's helpful. Thank you.
And we have Item 4.05.
We got to start at 02.
Oh, yeah, it's 4.02, 4.03. Can we vote on all of them?
In one section, yes.
So, vote on 4.02, 4.03, and 4.04 being added to the consent agenda?
Is it?
Make a motion.
Correct. As we continue to get used to the new verbiage, you could just say, if there's no objections, we'll move 4.02, 4.03, and 4.04 to the consent agenda.
And if there's no objections, we will move those to the consent agenda. All right. 4.05, we have a motion, we will have a motion to approve the memo of understanding with PVEAA as presented, and...
Is there a second? Do you need this voted today, or are we holding this off? Oh, they don't need it today?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so, we add that to the consent agenda, hearing no objections. And we have approval of exception to Policy 239, foreign exchange students. Any questions on that request for exception?
So, I can just clarify on this. You could certainly take action on the next two items tonight, if you would like to. The host family and the exchange student are aware that we typically take action on the second meeting, the 12th, and so, if it is, they are planning for, if you're going to approve it, that it would be the 12th, and they would make their travel arrangements after that. Would they be happy if you approved it tonight? I'm sure they would move those travel arrangements up, but...
Does anyone have any objections to doing this today? That way, we can get back to the family today, or tomorrow? So, can someone from the administration just break down how this got here?
So, we typically, throughout, it's usually in the spring, we receive requests directly from foreign exchange organizations for a student, and then they locate a host family within Perkiomen Valley. This is certainly a later request. Policy does indicate a deadline of, I believe, August 1st. You did approve one for us in August, that we had received prior to August 1st. This one, we did just receive about a week ago. However, they have provided all of the information, and in talking to them, they are requesting exception to that deadline in the policy. They are aware that their student would be coming a little later into the start of the school year, but do believe it would be a really good experience for their, the exchange student who is coming, as well as for RPV students. So, we have the nurses reviewing the immunizations, the ELD paperwork is being reviewed, so I anticipate that, you know, all of it will be in order, in order for this student to join us.
So, can one of us make a motion to vote, to move it to vote for this evening?
Well, it's actually already an action item for today's motion.
I can just...
You can move for approval?
I moved to, I'll do both of them. I move to approve exception to Policy 239, and I move to approve the, and also approve the exchange student from France.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussions?
I have just one question. Do you know which company the student is coming through?
Yeah, it's YFU Youth Foreign.
Youth for Understanding.
Youth for, thank you very much.
And do we, do we know what area at all? Like, is our student going to, or is that too much information?
This is a student coming to us from France.
Any other questions? No? Seeing none? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? No? Motion passes.
And our enrollment report, are we going over that?
Already did it.
Next, already did, oh yeah. All right, that's it for education.
Thank you very much. Business, Dr. Kohler. I was trying to time real quick, how long education, because I know Jim, Jim times it, I saw him write down a time.
An hour and five minutes, I'm not doing so well.
Yeah.
All right, moving on then. Item 5.01, Mr. Weaver?
Good evening, everybody. So, Mrs. Smith said it was seven minutes for her section, so, in fishing lure, lure, I guess I have some time here. So, our agenda is packed full of information, so we're going to kind of try to attack it in certain waves, in our new, new process that we use. So, to move forward with the PCCD grants on the safety and security side of things, there is the breakdown cut right from the state, that you can see the health and then the safety side of things, 176,832. The unfortunate thing is, and Mrs. Smith let this pass, I think, because we've all been banging our head, is that we had roughly about 21 days to get everything together, and the excitement of the state to get this passed, which we're grateful for, however, we had to have everything in, as Mrs. Smith said, by August 31st. So, it was a tight window for us. Specific to the safety and security, Dr. Russell, Mr. Miller, Mr. Fabrizio, and myself met several times to try to get our act together, what we were looking at, and to tie that into the definitions, as was previously mentioned, associated with the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 definitions of this grant opportunity. In addition, Mrs. Hurd worked with Dr. Russell to navigate the PCCD website, which is not exactly easy, it is pretty foreign to us. However, this is the third or fourth round of safety grants that we are using, this PCCD grant website, and it's still complicated for us. So, it, we had to decipher and break into different groups. We are focusing our entire 176,0832 on internal door upgrades for internal locking capabilities. This is a Tier 1 requisite of internal safety for us. It matches up well with us and what we're looking at. Our general estimate, remember, this is just approving the grant, we still have to go out and actually go process this, and have the Board approve the actual work to be done, is about 200 some odd thousand dollars, roughly. So, that almost matches exactly with a little overage of what we're allotted with this 176. This matches well with us, and what our safety concerns are currently. We also looked at upgrading the public address systems, and also installation of additional cameras in some of our buildings as well. Those don't go away, they go on a list, we hold on to those, and we continue to cycle those through, and our capital project opportunities to continue to beef up our security on multiple different levels. So, again, we would recommend moving forward to utilize our funds in this manner. It is part of 5.02. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you. Capital Projects update. We continue to provide capital projects in various forms, almost on a monthly basis, to keep the Board apprised of how we're moving forward. We have been working on a grounds building for our grounds department. Key priorities of this building, increased storage capabilities, and for our equipment, which we invested in, and also supplies for our grounds department, we desire about 4,000 square feet. As a comparison, right now, we have about 1,100 square feet. So, this would be almost four times the size of that, and again, it would allow us additional salt storage capacity, and our goal is to keep it centrally located to the district fields. Obviously, yes, we thought, hey, we can go to West, we've got a lot of space up there. However, that's not centrally located. And again, we wanted to look at this with, this is what we're here now for the short term, and the long term, where do we want to go for possible expansion, as we continue to grow in various functions. We looked at several different options in depth, that this Board was kind enough to move forward with a contract with Breslin, and they've, they've come forward with several cost estimates associated with these options. First option that we looked at was the varsity softball field area, below the fencing. We also looked at inside Keenan Stadium, which is next to the fieldhouse. However, I will note, that is a much smaller number, about half, but that building size is about half, and there's no salt storage associated with that. So, while that is the cheapest, it does come with some concerns, some big concerns on our part. Option 3 is Middle School East spare parking lot, behind the actual bus, bus landing zone. And Option 4 was below the varsity baseball field retaining wall. Was that really an option? Well, several years ago, STA actually looked at that as a possible bus depot, before they purchased in Iron Run, or Iron Bridge. And unfortunately, the floodplain is growing larger, so the reality is, is that's not really an option for us, but we stuck our foot out there, just to see what that cost estimate might be, but knowing that the floodplain would be expanding and run into that, that's really not a possibility. We did look at West, and we are also investigating a building at STA that we do rent for $1 a year here, to upgrade that building on the STA grounds itself. We're waiting for an estimate to come back from, and working with Tim Kreis, who is the owner of that property. So, right now, we are focusing in on Option 3. Again, those are temporary estimates, and we still need to continue to vet this process out. I just thought that it was important that we get this in front of the School Board, that you know the progress that we're making. The important part with this for Middle School East is, we are taking up some parking spots. The question now is, is do we have to replace those parking spots? And where do we replace those parking spots? If we have to put those parking spots right next to the newer building, then there will be some land development that has to go on with that. If we can pick up those 21 spots elsewhere on the campus, so for instance, next to the stadium, if we can asphalt that, where the stone is right now, would that take that up? Would the township agree to that? That's what we've got to get into and see what that possibility is. So, right now, just so the Board is aware, we are focusing in on Option 3 at this particular point in time. Dr. Kohler?
So, I know one of the things we talked about in the past was the entryway into the east parking lot, is that bridge, and that's the only access point. Would we be looking at reinforcing that, or making another access point, if that was the location?
To the best of my ability, Joe, I don't believe that we would need to fortify that bridge coming over with the...
That remains, we don't put that in there. Confident that it can support what we're looking at using it for?
Yeah, right now, some of those trailers do go over that on a daily, on a weekly basis, to cut the grass now. Mr. Keenan?
Yeah, I don't know whether you have any discussions for things that might overlap with the township. Townships are always looking for places for salt and things like that. Do you have any discussions with them offhand? I mean, I know sometimes this school district has meetings with townships to go over issues that might come up, that might affect them both, that where they might even do some cost savings, perhaps.
Thank you for that. That is something I did miss. We do currently share a salt bin with Perkiomen Township. However, they've informed us that their salt bin is having structural issues, and one of the reasons that, so we've got to move forward from that particular spot.
They're kicking us out.
Politely, they have asked us to look at other options. And again, if we're stuck, absolutely, the township has always been a big partner with us. So, if we're absolutely stuck, I don't, I don't see that as a problem, but we would certainly like to get that...
I was more like wondering if they might want to store some salt with us, if we're going to have now the place to store salt.
That's a possibility.
We could rent some space for their salt.
Sure.
I mean, I don't...
So, here is a rendition of the actual building itself. You can see that there are multiple bays for us to be putting our equipment in. Right now, we have a couple of small little areas, again, 1,100 square feet, we don't get much of our equipment that we, that we've purchased, to protect, to get it in and out of the weather, those types of things, to do our own maintenance in those particular buildings. So, again, it would be a significant upgrade for us, and we would be looking forward to Here is the rendition of where it would be at Middle School East. You can see, it's currently, would go on the spot where there is currently some parking spots, the 21 spots that we had talked about earlier. There are a couple of sheds there that need to be replaced, but by and large, the base is already done, so we would save significant dollars for placing something on a base that already exists. The additional cost, however, we're investigating would be the additional parking lots, spots that don't currently exist, to the left of that building. Dr. Campley?
I'm just thinking, like, as far as parking, right now, like, during the school day, it's not an issue, but after school, when there's activities, it's already tight there, and I'm wondering how, if you're now having operations there, and there, the employees that work out of that building need to park, are we going to be taking up more spots and having it be tighter than it already is? Or is there consideration to have them maybe park elsewhere, and use the golf cart to get themselves something, just so that it doesn't, I know that it gets filled up fast, that's all I'm saying.
So, I would, I would certainly defer. I don't want to talk for Dr. Russell, but certainly, that's one of the main questions Dr. Russell asked about the 21 spots being replaced or not being replaced. You know, we super, we use it heavy duty on those back-to-school teacher nights. Other than that, those sheds sit there. It is a major intersection with the buses on a daily basis, so we would have to plan operationally that, hey, we're out of there before the buses come in, and we're back before the buses come back, or vice versa. But, really, we, those are some of the questions that we have to ask ourselves, and go to the township and say, how flexible are you with this mandatory 21 spots? We do already have some spots, as I had mentioned, next to the stadium, they're not technically parking spots, it's stone, but now, if we could asphalt those, if we get 15... if we get 15 spots out of them, does that now mean we only have to find six more?
Can I just clear, I just want to clarify something because I don't know if you guys are both talking the same part. So you're saying there's a lot of traffic and spots that are not available at east. And that 21 spots are going to go away, plus spots are going to go away because workers are going to park there. That's what you're saying. That's what you're articulating, correct?
Yes, that the combination of in the evenings, we lose that and during the workday. When we now have workers who use that building are now parking over there, how is that going to impact overall parking and accessibility?
You're articulating, you're articulating that we might move these spots somewhere else. They could go Schwanksville, they could not, they could go to Evergreen, they could go to the high school, just somewhere on the campus, which doesn't necessarily alleviate the question that Dr. Campley was.
That is part of it. There is parking for the employees there in front, in the front part of that building there. There are six spots that would accommodate our grounds crew.
27 all total then.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. But that's just one thing. I'm thinking of how cramped it already is and how we can alleviate some of that because if you have, you're taking away spots, but you're also adding people who need to park there during the day.
I don't think east is that cramped, right? I know the high school is, but east seems to have enough spots open during the day from my experience.
No, I would agree during the day. I'm just thinking when we start to get into the afternoon. Grounds crew doesn't necessarily stop at the same time of teachers. And that's when you have all of your sporting events and your, and like the musicals and the plays, practice where you do have more parents coming on site. And we, we rent out space to the wrestling team and those parents, when they bring their kids to wrestling practice, they usually stay. So those are just examples of how, I'm just curious how it will fit.
Does east get full? Like, do we know how often the parking lot at east is full?
I, I would say that the main parking lot near the auditorium and the gymnasium does get mostly full at nighttime. I would say most of the teachers park there, not all of them.
Yeah, but that's not where we're putting this. This is going.
This is a kind of the opposite side of that. So hopefully it wouldn't be that, but Dr. Campley brings up a good point. As far as the bus loop and you know, buses, when they leave, we can't have grounds crew there. We can't have a grounds crew truck or a tractor there or getting a delivery. So we've got to get our planning and organization in order. Okay, so there is nothing for approval. We continue to work on that and we'll continue to get the, the real question right now is these 21 parking spots and how the township will force us to react. Some additional capital projects to consider. Again, we're just hitting these one and two. We will also summarize all of these in our annual capital projects presentation as well come November, December. Middle School East Auditorium, opening day, we did have some issues with our house speakers. So the boss said, we've got to get that fixed and I would certainly agree with that. So we also have plays coming up. So it's absolutely imperative that we look at making our speakers and our sound system much better. We've done some upgrades here and there, but this would be for us to actually fix this issue moving forward. And we will be obtaining quotes and bringing that forward to the school board for consideration as well. Any questions on that one? Okay, any public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, ESCO 5.0. This is just a 5.0, just to let you know that this is a, an additional process for us that we're considering. This would be something normal we would bring forward for the Safety and Operations Committee for discussion and analysis. So this is the proper place to do this. We continue to work with Mr. Maury, who is our ESCO consultant, on what a possible ESCO 5.0 might look like. Strategically, we look at our master facility study plan that we had conducted in 2018, December of 2018. As a general guide for us. We do know that many things have changed in four years. So we continue to look at those. The Director of Operations used to be Mr. Clemmer, Mr. Fabrizio. Continue to keep that list, update that list moving forward. We always start with a really large list. And then we pare it down considering other options, things that we're looking at, and of course, the cost and financing associated with these things. So this is what this step is tonight, just to get this out in the open as far as the priority one items that we're looking at. In October, we will come back, we will continue to do work on this and we'll get feedback tonight from the board and the public. And what we'll do is we'll continue to look at this and massage this and then we will interact with Jamie Doyle from PFM, who is our bond specialist, to look at various ways that we can fund these possible ESCO 5.0. And she will be here in October to help formulate this. So tonight's a good kickoff. We've got a couple of weeks that we can work on this. And then when Jamie comes here, she can provide us with a bunch of options that the board is understanding of why we need these dollars that we do need. Again, this is just a simple little timeline and flow chart that helps, should help the board and the public to understand where we're at. Of course, Mr. Subers is brought on at every level to make sure that we're following the rules and regulations associated with the ESCO GISA requirements. So I will stop here for any questions at this point in time from the board. Okay, any from the public at this point in time. Mrs. Lofton.
So Mr. Weaver, I'm just very curious with the rising interest rates and the expected additional rate increase that's pending, I think in the next two weeks, how is that impacting your decision-making processes and recommendations around potential bond funding?
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. That is a good question and that's why we have Jamie Doyle. To bring us with the options and what they may look like because it's absolutely critical that we look at, hey, if we, if interest rates are going up for every 100 basis points, you can expect over a 20-year bond to pay an additional X amount of dollars. Those are the types of consideration that we'd like to bring in front of the board so we can make a financial decision. That's, that's strong. That's a really good question. Okay, we have with us Phil Maury, who is our ESCO consultant, who has guided us through four ESCO projects. And Mike Hanson, who has run all four of the ESCO projects through CM3. They have a little bit of a history here so that the school board understands the projects that we've done to move as quickly as possible. To understand the dollars and where they were spent and which buildings were impacted. Okay, Mike, Phil, I don't know how you want to do this.
I'll make a, I'll make a few comments. First of all, backing up. The McCamley family is the family that has the French exchange student. They were in the front row. They're friends of mine. And they thank you a lot because it did help them quite a bit. And I'm sure they'll be in touch with you, Dr. Russell. Second, I'm not going to stand here for long because I'm kind of running at about 60%. I came down with vertigo yesterday and I have not spent a lot of time vertically. So Mike Hanson is going to carry the ball and go through the numbers. I'll be right here to answer questions, but I'm better off sitting down.
Thanks very much. I assume this is on at this point. Okay, good enough. Okay, as Mr. Weaver had stated, we have a history with the school district going back to 2012. We've done essentially four projects. Some would label that four and a half as one project stretched into two fiscal years. But in essence, this would be labeled ESCO 5.0. The subsequent phases of work, I'm sorry, I skipped one point. Way back in 2012, the district issued an RFP run by Mr. Maury. We were selected as the ESCO of choice at that particular time. The subsequent phases of work, ESCOs 2 through 4, all went via an RFP process. We are operating under legislation, Pennsylvania legislation called the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. There have been four iterations of that act since 1995, I believe. The latest one passed in 2016 is Act 163. That changed the ballgame, so to speak, with regard to ESCO projects and, and Guaranteed Energy Savings Act in that it allowed for the addition of non-energy related capital projects up to a certain degree. This allowed for the high school pool renovation during ESCO 3.0 and the South Elementary kitchen expansion, which was the ESCO 3.5, we'll call it, okay? CM3 GISA projects, we are the GC, for lack of a better term. We operate under a contract that does not allow any vendor initiated change orders. If we miss something in the process of surveying, we have to eat the cost. That being said, the district can always initiate a change order if there's additional work that they want us to accomplish during the installation phase. Just as a brief recap, I won't go through line by line. I promised to hold it to six minutes if possible. But Phase Point One, Phase One. District-wide lighting controls and a lighting retrofit. That brought the district to, at that time was the state-of-the-art lighting technology. Various temperature control upgrades. The pool unit on the roof here was replaced outright. We put in a shoulder boiler. A shoulder boiler for the high school is a smaller size boiler that you can actually supply heat for the building through most of the heating season. It's just when it gets intensely cold outside that you need supplemental boilers to fire at that point in time. Variable frequency drives throughout the district. We did take Schwanksville, Schwanksville boilers and converted them from oil-fired to gas-fired. Significant savings just in the cost of energy there. A complete HVAC renovation at South Elementary. All terminal units replaced, boilers replaced, chiller installed, cooling tower installed. Skipback, there was a chiller replacement and a small item for middle school west power factor correction. Total project cost was a little under 7.5 million for all of that work. Phase two came along. This was a much bigger project, obviously, at 13.3 million. The primary motivation for this project was roof replacement and repair at six buildings. Couple that with the high school pool renovation. There were 15 of the rooftop units, 15 of the 27 rooftop units on this building that were replaced outright. We did one boiler at Evergreen, one boiler at middle school east. Finished up some of the variable frequency drives and small items such as Evergreen domestic hot water, middle school east gym is now air-conditioned. All for a total of 13.3. Most of that going to roofs, quite frankly. Phase three comes along. The state-of-the-art lighting technology had changed at that point in time and the utility rebates were significant enough that we did another lighting conversion to LED district-wide. We continued on the south building renovation. There were moisture-ish, significant moisture issues at South Elementary at that point in time. We essentially did the entire exterior of the building, new windows, new panels, et cetera, et cetera. Which tightened up the building shell and generated significant energy savings for that building too. Middle School East roof repairs, there are panels up there that essentially hide the rooftop units. They were deteriorating significantly. Couple of dishwashers replaced at Evergreen and Skipback. Some of the window seals at the high school were compromised at that point in time. That was a small item that we repaired. And Schwanksville grease trap was replaced for the kitchen there. Little over 7 million for that particular project. Phase three point, yes. No, 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 you're looking side by side. No. Yeah, there's two separate panels, windows there essentially. Phase 3.5, roughly speaking, that spilled into the next fiscal year was the South Kitchen Expansion. That was the bulk of the project there, high school dishwasher replacement and driveway lighting. Phase four came along. This is our most recent project and it is still open pending the gas line being installed for middle school west, which is currently underway. But this essentially dealt with more HVAC issues throughout the district. A few chiller replacements here. The glycol systems that we put in five buildings were for essentially anti-freezing capacity on the chilled water lines. Oil tank removal, now that the district is for the most part on natural gas as the heating fuel. We were able to get rid of those tanks for you, pull them. You don't, no longer have to file the paperwork with the state for those. As I said, a couple of chiller replacements there and a few boiler replacements scattered throughout. Middle School East exterior repointing. A lot of the block work had suffered significant deterioration over time, allowing moisture to enter into the building. We essentially repointed that with a masonry subcontractor. And South emergency generators replaced, a little under 6 million for that project. If you go back and sum up all of the different phases and you look at a distribution by school on dollars. You can see that the high school and south are the two biggest. Now, for good reason. Virtually half of the high school is with regard to the pool renovation and the roof replacement there. That, all, those two combined are roughly speaking about $5 million. With regard to south, that is almost a new building at this point in time. With respect to the entire shell of the building and the interior of the building. Complete repainting, reflooring. You have the kitchen expansion there. Significant work done at South Elementary. Okay. Impact of all phases on energy consumption. We are still operating below what the original base year was back in 2012. This is specific to million BTUs. I combined electric and natural gas and oil. And just converted those to BTUs per energy unit. So you have a significant reduction here in spite of the fact that building operations have changed significantly since the base year. Most of that COVID-related. Your buildings are now operating 24/7 to provide for more ventilation coming into the buildings, more fresh air. This outside air that you're bringing in. Think of it this way, originally you were roughly speaking around 10% outside air going through the HVAC units. You're now up between 15 to 20%. Is that a fair guess, Mr. Fabrizio? All of that increased outside air now has to be conditioned. Either heated in the heating season or cooled in the cooling season. That has a significant utility impact. We're also, the district is also running the boilers during the non-heating season for dehumidification. That has limited success in three of your buildings, Evergreen, Skipback and Middle School East. The reason I say that is during original construction, there were piping mistakes for all of the classroom units in those buildings. In that the heating coil and the cooling coil are in the wrong positions. So therefore, you have to overcompensate with the building systems in order to correct for that dehumidification. What we will propose in Phase 5.0 is to correct that situation. You also had new equipment going into the classrooms, whiteboards, more cameras, increased outdoor lighting, card access, all of that has a utility impact too. But we were still able to be below where you were in 2012 with regard to energy consumption. Phase five, these are all deemed priority one items. Collectively, we talk about all of these capital needs that still exist in the district and we prioritize them and only focused on the priority one items. As you can see, with regard to the high school, we're recommending stadium lighting replacement. High school chillers that are at the end of their useful life. Rooftop units that are past the end of their useful life. Obviously, there's temperature control upgrades that go with any new HVAC equipment going in. Pool pump room has deteriorated to a significant, significant degree where it is now a safety issue. Middle School East, we would be replacing all terminal units, HVAC terminal units throughout the entire building. Same holds true for Evergreen, same holds true for Skipback. Those are the three buildings where you're having significant moisture issues, humidity issues, I should say. Chiller replacement, a few boilers here and there. But essentially, this completes the list for the district with regard to HVAC needs. All of this scope was looked at in previous phases. But pushed to the, I don't want to say pushed to the side, but deferred because of one, budgetary issues. And two, some of this equipment still have had life expectancy in it at the time. These systems are all past their useful life at this point and starting to experience problems now. I broke down at the request of the district into three I broke down at the request of the district into three various options, dollar amounts, that is. A $5 million project essentially addresses Evergreen, Skipback, and some issues at Schwengsfield with regard to the chiller that needs to be replaced and the large multi-zone air handling units that need work, significant work on them. High school rooftop units that still need to be done as well as the control upgrades. 5.3 million, roughly speaking. Yes?
I could, just so the board members understand, there is a savings factor that goes into this process or else we wouldn't do it, right? So the savings and the energy goes against the cost associated. And at the end of the project itself, Mr. Maury has to calculate that and prove that. That is part of the mandatory part, process of any GISA that we have to prove that we have energy savings to a certain amount within the contract itself.
Mr. Super.
Well, another big change in the law was that you could include capital avoidance, which is if you were planning on doing these capital projects at some point, you can, you can add the cost of those improvements into, along with the energy savings in meeting this guarantee.
That is correct. Like I said, Act 163, everything comes into consideration for economies of scale at that point in time. The 7.5 million dollar option, this would add, take all of the $5 million option and add in the high school needs with regard to the stadium lighting, chillers replaced. You currently have three chillers at the high school, all past the end of its useful life. We would be going to two chillers there. Same tonnage, we're not downsizing, but a much more efficient unit at this point in time. Middle School West, there are some window repairs that are similar to what we did at the high school where the sealant around the perimeter of the windows needs to be repaired and the air handling unit, the large air handling units there need to be recommissioned. I included Schwengsfield back driveway repaving here, which is a very small cost because I know when we bring that chiller in to replace the existing unit, we're pretty much going to tear up that back driveway. So we want to make sure that, that is still safe once we're done. The $10 million option includes everything in the five and seven and a half in addition to a new roof repair recoding at Middle School West. That roof is no longer under warranty, starting to experience fairly significant issues. Not a cheap roof to replace, but operating under, without a warranty is quite a risk that the district is taking on right now. So I've included that. The footnote that you see at the bottom right, Middle School East HVAC is still not addressed in this particular option. That is a big ticket because of the number of units at Middle School East as well as the problems that are now being experienced there. If you look at this particular matrix and you were to do all of the Priority Ones, this positions the district that you don't have to do anything with major building systems in the district for at least the next 15 years based on the work that we've done in the previous four phases as well as Phase Five. That is, yes?
I just, but yet at the same, so that was one of the things I noticed when I was scrolling through these that it looks like it brings us up to having everything pretty much taken care of for a while. But then I have the concern where you said the, the Middle School East HVAC was not included, so then...
That's what I'm saying. If you do all of the Priority Ones, that original list that I put up.
But that, do we have a price for all of the Priority Ones?
Yes. If you had, if you did all of Priority One, it's slightly under 14.3 million.
Okay, that's where I was getting confused. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. But looking at this particular matrix, this positions the district very well for the next 15 years with regard to capital expenditures. You've essentially replaced all of the major systems in the building with the exception of windows. But windows have essentially 40-year life expectancies. So aside from some of the repair work done with regard to the perimeter seals, that's about it. The window itself is still intact and still functioning. Advantages to doing all of the Priority One scope. Like I said, all major building systems are now updated. The district is good to go for the next 15 years. You now have consistency across all buildings with respect to equipment manufacturers. Same manufacturer for boilers, chillers, terminal units going across the board. So when a, a building engineer, custodian moves to a different building, there's no learning curve whatsoever. He's already familiar with the equipment there. Also, the utility incentives right now from PICO are extremely impressive and aggressive. So a lot of this work would, you would get some type of rebate from the utility to help finance it. You also have a common digital platform for temperature controls across the entire district at that point in time, making Mr. Fabrizio's life that much easier and his staff. They could actually do remote troubleshooting and remote control of the buildings at that point in time, lessening overtime needs. Once again, in addition to lowering the energy consumption on every building at this point, you have a much healthier environment for the students and staff with regard to temperature control and humidity control. Any questions?
Other question?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about the coils? And I'm questioning, I'm asking whether, when the building was built, were the coils put in properly at the time? Or were they put in incorrectly? I mean, that's the first question. When the building was built, the way the coils are currently set, was that correct to do at the time?
Not in my opinion, no. I'm sorry, I should stay here. Not in my opinion. What you have essentially is you have outside air coming into the unit. It's hitting a heating coil first, then a cooling coil. That is not dehumidifying the air during the cooling season. It should be reversed where it hits the cooling coil first and then the heating coil to allow for dehumidification of that outside air coming.
That issues in no other school?
You don't have the same type of classroom units in the other buildings. You have larger air handling units in the other buildings. In the high school, you have 10 univents, which we would be replacing, but they are along this front wall going onto the, I believe it's the special needs classrooms down this wing. There's three classrooms down there. The reason we're replacing them is, one, they've passed their useful life and, two, they are up in the ceiling becoming a maintenance nightmare for Mr. Fabrizio and his staff. We're going to bring them down to flush with the ceilings for easier access with the exception of the three down at that end. And the reason for that is it's a slanted ceiling. So it becomes problematic.
One other question about that. So, and then Ms. White, I know you have your hand raised.
Could I just add something?
Yeah.
You know, with the, the question as to whether or not they were built correctly or incorrectly. At the time, schools were less concerned about air conditioning at the time, okay? And so they brought the, the air conditioning coil inbound of the heating coil so that you minimize the freezing in the winter for obvious reasons, okay?
Yeah.
But in order, in order to properly dehumidify, you have to drop the moisture out of the air and then reheat it a little bit to bring it back up to the proper relative humidity. So that's, that's where this reversal comes in that Mike's talking about. So I would, you know, he calls it, yeah, a mistake. I, I will tell you that a lot of schools were built that way in the last 50 years. You know, I've been, I've been doing this for a long time. And we're, and we're switching them around a lot, too, so.
And this was in Skipback?
No, this is in Middle School East and Skipback and Evergreen.
What year is East built?
It's, it's over 20 years. It's...
And what, what year is West built?
2004.
West is the newest.
And Skipback was 98, right? And you don't have the coils like that in Skipback?
No, you do.
You do.
Oh, you do have them like that in Skipback.
Yeah, Evergreen, Skipback and Middle School East are the problem schools. I hate to use that term, but for proper dehumidification, that's the issue.
The issue is of whether or not anybody could be liable for that mistake. And, you know, statute of limitations doesn't apply to school districts, but I believe a statute of repose does and we're beyond the statute of repose, which is in Pennsylvania is 20 years. But, and then there was also the issue of whether or not it met the standard, you know, of care in the architect, school architectural community at that time. And I think that was a point that Mr. Maury may have been referred to.
Yeah.
So we can look further into that, but...
Okay. Just wanted to check, Ms. White, Ms. White?
So I want to thank you for the extensive and very detailed download, you know, of the historical perspective for all these ESCOs because I, I think it's a good baseline. To recap everything, especially since so much time has passed and the relationship, as you mentioned, is a lengthy one. I, I have a lot of questions about the development of the ESCO 5. And frankly, I, I just wanted to just jump in with, not my questions, since there are no agenda items to vote on or to consider, but the comment that this is the finance, you know, committee of the whole at this point. And so it seems to me that it would probably be the most efficient to bring financial items. Obviously, there's costs tied to these different scenarios of an ESCO. But it would be the most efficient to bring these items, once they're vetted, actually through a facilities and a, you know, of a separate committee. I've said for a while that I feel as though the facilities portion of the finance, the Safety and Operations Committee as it was previously, it, it's just frankly too broad and too, you know, divergent of a topic. The, the facilities portion of the operations of the school district is extraordinarily important. It should not be lumped in with finance, in my opinion, professionally. And frankly, I'm just a little bit confused as to, although, you know, C3 has a historical perspective of our previous capital project work, I'm, I'm a little confused as to where Mr. Fabrizio's input and where his presentation portion of this is. I, I know he spent the last year getting up to speed with everything. This historical perspective, I'm sure, is, is a very large part of it. But I think going forward that these types of financial decisions in, you know, finance committee of a whole during meetings should be met with only agenda items that are brought forth by an operations and facilities committee. So that, that's my two cents about that, but I have an extensive list of questions I was jotting down with regards to the content, Mr. Fabrizio's input and also the overall. I, I don't have a problem with the, you know, the priority list or anything like that, but in terms of implementation and in terms of who exactly is going to be responsible for facilitating what now that Mr. Fabrizio is in place, I have, I have a significant number of questions about that. Thank you.
Do you want to ask the questions now or?
No, because there's no agenda items. So, so although this needs to be discussed, it's my feeling that this should not be discussed in a financial committee of a whole. There's, there's nothing, there's no option to vote on. There's no recommendation from Mr. Fabrizio at this point. These are just, this was a historical analysis of the ESCOs that have been, you know, handled by C3 and, and I feel that that's valuable because I think that from a historical perspective, it's important for all board members to have a baseline of knowledge with regards to the money spent and the projects that need to be accomplished. But operations and maintenance and facilities should really be handled not as part of finance committee of a whole, but as a separate subcommittee. And if that doesn't happen as a whole, that's, that's fine. But Mr. Fabrizio was put in place specifically to oversee these types of elaborate and, and all-encompassing district activities. And I, I need to understand further about what his contribution to the list was in terms of prioritization, what his feelings about costs are, what his feelings about sourcing services are. And I need to, that conversation should be handled internally as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, although I do appreciate the, you know, the baseline perspective, I just don't know that this was an appropriate place to have this particular presentation, especially since there are no agenda items tied to it.
Dr. Campley?
So I just have a quick question and please bear with me as facilities is not my area of expertise. We know when you look at that list of priorities and the fact that the, if we do all of them, if we go with the, I guess it's really the fourth option that includes MSE, it sounds great. We don't need to touch anything for 15 years.
That one includes the air conditioner, right?
Yeah, the fourth option, which isn't, so that would be that 14 mil one that's not, there's not a slide for that. So my thought, you know, initial thought is, okay, great, we just take care of it all. We don't have to touch it for 15 years. But then the fiscal part of my brain, that I'm, I'm still learning how to work with all these facilities, is wondering if we do it all now, instead of spreading, taking a few jobs and having like a 5.0, a 5.2, you know, like we did with the others, if we do it all at once, are we setting ourselves up to have this effect where in 15 years, everything goes and we're stuck having to fix and change everything all at once? And putting whatever board is in place at that point in a really tough position as far as where do they get the money from? Or is it better to spread it out so that as things start to go, they're not all going at the same time? So it's just, I would just love some feedback or some thought from, from a facilities expert kind of person.
Go ahead.
I, I do understand your question. ESCOs 1 through 4 essentially do spread out those installations. So everything will not be failing at one time. The additional point that I failed to make is given that long list of items for the 14 million, there is no way we would be able to get that done by the end of next summer. This would really spread over two fiscal years, this, this particular installation. Usually I stand before you on previous ESCO projects sometime around January, February. In talking with Joe and Jim, I alerted them to the fact that lead times on HVAC equipment right now are 24 to 36 weeks. That's why we were pushing this up early in the year. In the event that the board did want to move forward with it, we would be able to get a lot of work done next summer because we would have equipment deliveries. But there would still be some lingering equipment that would spill in to fiscal year 24 at that point in time. We would do it best that we could to get as much installed as possible, focus on Evergreen, Skipback and Middle School East first because of the humidity issues you're experiencing there. But there, I'm just being brutally honest here. There is no way you could get that much work done in one summer.
No, I appreciate that because I, I don't know how all of that works and I just want to make sure that we're not setting, you know, up the future to be something that is a challenge for whoever's sitting in these seats 15 years from now. So I appreciate that.
That, that is a good point. And the other part of it is, is we cannot stress enough the financial impact of this. It was already brought up by Mrs. Lofton. Once we develop this possible program, we'll work with Jamie Doyle to find out, okay, what does it look like in a rising interest rate market environment? If we, now all of a sudden it's gone from, hey, rates are near zero or, you know, really, so we've got time to develop this stuff. Now rates are going up 100 basis points, maybe 150 basis points in the next couple of months. What is the, the cost of delaying now becomes something we have to interpret that we haven't had to do in a while, right? It's much different in the early 2000s where the school board at that time moved forward because they had enrollment as the pusher. So almost regardless of what that interest rate was that they were going to pay, they needed new buildings. So that was the driver of this. In this particular case, we're trying to get ourselves straightened from an equipment perspective moving forward in a, in a completely unknown market environment, interest rate environment. So we'll all have to work together on this. Everybody has a different pressure point. We have, as far as saying, that's too much. We'll have to get to that and we'll have to see where that is, whatever that cost is because there is a cost to our taxpayers directly for this. We are in a tight 12-year window where our debt service is bundled. You know, we can unbundle that. That's, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying we have options to look at that, to space that out. There's a cost of doing that and that's where Jamie Doyle is invaluable to help us understand that. So every step that we take, we know that we've got to get this stuff done. If we space it out over five years, maybe these interest rates now are 7%. Maybe. I, I don't know. So, and then we hit, and then we hit ourselves in the head because we should have done something now instead of wait seven years ago. But that's to be determined and that's part of the process.
In a perfect world, and you don't have to answer, Mr. Weaver, but in a perfect world, when will you, when would you want the board, when will you have everything to submit to the board for the board to hold discussions and then vote?
I would think by October. I would think by October. Once we really can share the financial impact and, and lay it all out there on the table, we'll work together by October.
Great. Yeah.
Hi, Judy Lofton again from Skipback. From what I recall, and it's a little bit vague in my memory, there was a threshold at $9 million that we tried to stay below because of some sort of a tax implication that was associated with that. And so when we had done previous ESCOs, we were targeting about $9 million because there was a benefit at that level. But the other thing that I recall is in a environment of anticipated interest rates increasing, we actually have three years to spend the money. So even though you couldn't complete everything within a one-year period. For example, when we did the South renovations, we did a bond financing initially that we held in a special account that was then expended, you know, you have up to three years to expend that. So if you think that right now is a good time for that, that makes sense. But what was the, if, can you remind me what it was at $9 million?
It's $10 million. And $10 million is if it's bank qualified or not. But now we have, you have, as a general school board, we have gone over that. Obviously, when we went to the $90 million building program, we had some really large bond issues, $38, $40 million, where we far exceeded that. But that was due to need as part of the project itself. And that's part of the critical analysis because we'll have to say, if we split it between nine and six and, and cycle that, what are the possibilities that that $6 million is now at 5% where we could have got it at 3.5? And I don't know. Again, that's where Jamie Doyle, that's a great point for us to consider as we move forward. We're just going to be open and honest. This is where we've got to get to. This is, and as far as the priorities go, as Ms. White mentioned, you know, Joe was part of that conversation. We actually reserved the large conference room. We went out, we got the book, we looked at things that we knew, were in there. And we are tying those directly from that feasibility study back into where we want to go with that. So we have an accurate description of where we were four years ago and to help the school board members and the public understand why we're coming up with some of these items. There are unfortunately some issues that have cropped up as well. And then we add them to the list. And then in December, when we see the whole capital projects presentation for everything that's out there, the whole 40 million bucks, that's when we kind of bring those into loop. We're just jumping the gun again because of the fear about the 24 to 36-week delay that we could have this great program, this great project, the finance comes into place and we approve it in February and then we don't get anything done because we waited, which is, you know, part of what we've got to figure out. Any, any other questions?
I'm interested in more information. Is this, is that going to, on the lifespan of all of these things? Is that going to be part of the capital projects? And it would be our public, is that Joe, Director of Operations, who would really speak authoritatively on that?
Sure, yes, yes. And that's, I think Mike was alluding to that. A lot of these pieces of equipment have different life cycles as well. So it's not like at the end of 15 years, it's going to come down. When we do the capital projects presentation, we usually prioritize. And some of that conversation is from Joe's expertise in saying an HVAC unit should last 25 years. Well, that's why if you're looking at Skipback and you're looking at Evergreen, a lot of those HVAC units are now at 26 and 28 years. And so we've gotten our money's worth from a taxpayer perspective and from a business perspective. But now the reality is we've got to replace them.
Is there a way in the October report, you could go over, for instance, ESCO 1 through 4 and go over almost like a year grid, having the next, the next 25 years where the items that were fixed? And I think he's already.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that is very simple to do. I'll take that matrix that I put forth and put every building system as to when it was installed and what the life expectancy is.
And then, Dr. Campley, that actually gives us a real good grid to look at. And by the way, we'll, we'll both still be here in 15 years, right? So.
I'm going to be on an island, but you're more than welcome to be here in 15 years.
I hope so. But that'll give us a grid that we can really look at from ESCO 1 to ESCO 5, where it'll all ebb and flow.
Certainly, certainly.
Okay, any other questions?
And Judy and Bob, I have a microphone for you there.
Okay. So, moving on, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And we'll get something locked up for October.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Phil, don't, don't fall over here.
Don't worry.
Okay, so electrical contractor for the high school auditorium. Last month, we came forward with an estimate. The very next day, we had an electrical contractor come out. Before you, you see for action and the finance committee of the whole coming forward, the Board Motion 5.03 to proceed to approve Pittsburgh Stage at a total cost of $191, $941 for the complete retrofit of the electrical and the lighting in, in the high school auditorium. And we would recommend that moving forward. Any questions from the school board members? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you. All right, security personnel. This is a temporary placeholder for Board Motion 5.04. Mr. Miller, myself, and Mr. Subers continue to work with Dr. Russell on an amended contract for APC, which is our current security provider. As a reminder, we have two years left on a three-year contract that we approved in an extension. We're working on an addendum that possibly ends at the end of this year and works in correlation with our effort to have in-house security. Of course, we have to be careful with how we go about doing this because we don't want shortage. We want to make sure we have mandatory coverage for all of our students and staff at all time. So we're working through the details. Mr. Subers, anything to add to that?
Well, no, I, I guess the context is the original agreement or the current agreement was a three-year agreement for a stated level of services. If we proceed with our plan to bring back certain security staff in-house or to hire certain security staff in-house, that will affect the local, the level of services required from the vendor. So we would need to negotiate a, an amendment to, to our existing contract to address that issue. And, and in conjunction with that, the vendor is raising issues regarding being reimbursed for its cost in providing training to staff that we potentially would hire from that, from the vendor. We have a proposal that is out to the vendor after a couple go-rounds and we're waiting to hear back. And we, and, you know, with the intent that we'd have something for next week.
Any?
But just to confirm, under, under no circumstances, whether negotiations are going well or not and intent regardless, the school will be secured at all time? Yeah, okay.
That, that has been.
But everyone's on the same page.
That has been the priority.
They're on the same page with that too, correct? They've committed to that.
Correct.
Just a quick question. If we were to amend the contract, would it be brought back to the board what the cost differential may be? In case, you know, if they come back and they say they want X amount in order to end the contract sooner, how that may impact us being able to then pay for our own staff?
Absolutely. All that would be brought back to you. And, and my understanding is that under the current version, it would be of benefit to the district.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. We are proposing to move forward with an LED scoreboard to be placed at Keenan Stadium. We did talk about this in last fall, I believe. The cost of the scoreboard unfortunately went up. But I just wanted to point out that we do have sponsorships set aside. We do know that we have PVYB, which is $100,000 over multiple years, a 10-year span, of which we have $40,000 already in hand. And St. Luke's, which we, the sponsorship was approved of $130,000 over three years. And we do feel that once the LED scoreboard goes up, there will be six places for advertising. We will have spots for at least five of those. So at least $5,000 apiece somewhere in there. We've got to negotiate that. But somewhere between an additional $20,000 to $30,000 in revenue stream moving forward every year. It would be purchased through TIPS contract. And some of the other things associated with the scoreboard is that we were, we followed up with, why did the prices go up from last year, which was about $127,000 and the initial cost was about $151? Well, they've reduced that because they found out that they had a time scoring clock on there that we already have on our field. So they've reduced that down to 146. There are increases in some steel and concrete. However, they have also proposed to increase the pixel resolution of the, of the scoreboard from a 16-millimeter to a 10-millimeter, which again, I thought, okay, let's make sure that this is okay. So I contacted Mr. Ganesh. I said, Mr. Ganesh, is there value in moving from a 16-millimeter to a 10-millimeter for an LED? He said yes. He estimated that that cost would probably be somewhere between $6,000 and $8,000 in value. So yes, we are paying more for that. But as part of that package, we'll be getting about $6,000 to $8,000 more in value with better pixels associated with our LEDs. Much more clear, much more conducive to the whole stadium seeing the, the entire thing. So we would move forward with that, and that is item 5.05 for tonight.
I have a question.
That is, yep.
Oh, go, go, go.
I know. I was just going to say, there is the, the stadium, again, the scoreboard, I'm sorry, and, and what it would look like. Again, there would be opportunities for us to use this not just for athletic events, but also for additional advertising associated with that, with these public events, graduation band competitions. We could foresee a huge upside to improving this and a, and a good, a good value for this. Mr. Saylor?
Can you, so, I mean, obviously with the St. Luke's donation, not donation, but with the St. Luke's contractor donation, however you put it, it almost pays for the scoreboard in itself. Can you explain the, the fact that the PVYB is on here? Because the PVYB donation wasn't necessarily for a scoreboard. Like they have now in Middle School East, they, and I actually think on Middle School West, they have their logo on the, their donation was for a different reason. Why is it being shown or allocated towards the scoreboard?
It was for the turf and the stadium, the turf installation and stadium upgrades.
Yeah. Okay, so.
In general.
It was a generalized, okay. Got it. So if we took away the, the PV, PVYB donation, because that's on a whole and, and for that they got items. We have the St. Luke's, whose responsibility is it then to sell the other revenue streams to make the scoreboard a profit mode for the school district?
I, I would think it would be myself and Mr. Felty, Mrs. Hurd. I mean, it's all, all hands on deck.
And then where does that profit go? Does it go to the athletic department? Does it go to an overall fund for the school district?
It would go into the general fund of the school district.
Correct. So if a sponsor came by and said, I will, I'll give you $20,000, but I want to make sure that money is only used for the athletic department, we would say no to that, correct?
That's correct. It goes into the general fund.
Got it, okay.
Mr.?
You have any idea or leads on digital media sales for sponsorship and how to put those items up there and how to market them and how to, and what the charge?
Not at this time. As I stand here now, I do know Dr. Russell and, and myself. We've talked about how we're going to move forward, but I don't have anything solid right now. And Dr. Russell, I don't know if there's anything you want to add. I do know that we have some contacts out there that we're trying to get some, some footing on. To try to do that could be, anything could be 15-second snippets in between quarters or something like that.
Are you asking like how much would the school district charge for X? Yeah. Well, I'm sure we could go to other school districts that have this and see what, what they're using, right?
We could, yes. So we would recommend moving forward with that?
Jim?
Yes.
Wow. Got a couple of questions here.
Go ahead.
Wow, that is a really powerful mic.
Only the best.
Yeah, I know, right? The $146,000, does that include costs to, for like any of the data line that would go from wherever the hardware is that is operating the scoreboard? Like is it, does that include trenching or fishing through existing lines? And also the hardware that's going to drive the score, the scoreboard? I'm assuming it comes with a computer or something. Is that a part of this cost as well?
I would say that, Mr. Ganesh, anything you want to add?
So currently there is no fiber in that, in that scoreboard location. And running a fiber to that scoreboard location is not included in that, in that cost. That'll be an additional cost. And running a fiber, if you, if you run it through E-rate, it's about $10,000.
So does that mean then that we're actually looking at a cost to get it up and running that's going to exceed then $146,000?
Possibly.
I feel like we definitely need to have, at least for me, before I could feel like I could vote on this, is I need some, like, final costs of what it's going to be. Installation, what it's, to keep running. If there, if this isn't the actual price and there's going to be little pieces added on, I feel like we need, in full disclosure, we need to have those pieces of information.
Just to make sure we're on, I, I agree, but just to make sure the motion is just, it's just stating that the, the purchase of the scoreboard of 146.9, it doesn't say, you know, anything else into that. So that's just the cost of the scoreboard. But I understand what you're saying. You need to know the cost of the fiber, the dig.
Right, because if I'm saying yes to 146, what's?
They would need a secondary motion unless they have it in another budget item, so.
Yeah, so what good is a scoreboard if we don't have then the funds to get it up and running?
Do you have a, do you have a budget somewhere that has that money that you don't need to come to the school board?
Technology budget certainly does have some available monies.
Typically, what we will do is we'll present an E-rate budget in March. So in, in March, we'll go through all the E-rate items that we planned to do that particular summer, but that, over the next school year. And this was presented last March, if you guys can recall, hoping that this scoreboard will go through, but it did not. It should be a repeat for, for this coming March. It would be another E-rate item. And again, based on what, what, based on the proposal we got last year, it was around $10,000.
We can certainly get that information and add it this week, so that you're aware of that.
And are we sure it has to be a fiber? I mean, Cat 5, Cat 6 can be run a certain distance. Almost a football field.
Run, we got to run network cable. Doesn't matter if it's a fiber or Cat 5 or Cat 6. We got to run some cables there. Might also be fiber. We are a trench. We got to run some cables, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Last topic for tonight, TD Bank financing. So way back in November of 2021, we approved three trucks to be purchased, F-350s. Obviously, they were delayed. When they were delayed, the bank rate was not held for more than a certain amount of period of time. So we had to go back out and reset the bank interest rate. We worked with TD Bank. And so now we are receiving two trucks instead of the three. So the third one's still on backorder. So the bank has agreed to move forward with the financing of the two trucks. So instead of the 2.450 interest rate, which we thought we were going to get, it's now 3.830. Talk about the market impact. The delta between the two, what we agreed to for the two truck, for three trucks, when you break it down, divide it by three and then times it by two, compared to what the new interest rate on the right-hand side is, it's about an $87 difference. So this is not the end of the world because the interest rates are so small. That's why there's not that great big of a difference for this municipal lease to move forward for the two trucks. We still need to come forward with the third truck with a different bank rate when it goes to production. It still has not been sent to production yet. These two we should receive in the next couple of weeks. When we receive them, that's when the bank says, okay, we will pay for them. They pay for them with the approved documentation that we have.
And we're asking for board action this evening to make sure that we lock in on the rate. And we need a new board action because there are different lease terms.
Any questions from the board? Ms. White has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Can you remind me what the duration of the, of the loan is, the lease loan?
Sure, it's a three-year municipal lease.
Okay. And is there any opportunity, once we go ahead and get the financing secured for the third, to reevaluate or roll all into one if the interest rates change?
Yeah, we could, I'm, I'm talking to Mrs. Hurd now. I, we could. Yeah, we could, I'm talking to Mrs. Hurd now. I, we could ask the bank, but I don't know if they would. We could always ask.
I guess, I guess my, the reason that I'm asking the question is because I actually thought it was a five-year term, but if it's a three-year term, the, the interest rates are not going to stay as they are. They'll fluctuate obviously. So I'm just curious about if there's an opportunity, or you've considered the opportunity and the likelihood of possibly being able to refinance these particular, these particular funds down the road.
We could certainly look at that, but if the interest rates are going up, that might not be a way to go, but we'll certainly look at that. Thank you.
And these are lease purchase agreements. So at the end of the three-year term, we pay dollar and we own the vehicles.
Are the trucks ready?
Two of the trucks are.
What would the third truck be?
Don't know, has not gone to production yet. Is that correct, Joe?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any concerns about moving item 02, 03, and 04 to the consent agenda? And it sounds like 05, we want to keep off of consent. Is that correct? Okay, and then we need a motion for item 5.06. I move that we approve the financing for the two trucks.
There a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay, and any comments or questions about moving 7, 8, 9, and 10 to consent? If not, that concludes my section.
Do you want to, I apologize, we're gonna, do you want to move on 5.09 or do you want to wait? Is it okay to wait? Or do you want to do that tonight?
I, I think it is okay to wait. However, if the board is comfortable, we could also move on it tonight since the year has started. And by policy, that information should have been to the board in August.
Okay, so let's move 7 and 8 to consent and I move that we approve item 5.09.
Discussions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And then I will also move that we approve 5.10.
There a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. All in favor, say, are any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
That concludes section 5.
Thank you.
Payment of bills, Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Payment of bills will be covered next week.
Professional personnel, Mr. Fountain?
Items 7.01, 02, 03, 04, 05, and 06 are all on consent. Action was requested on item 7.07, requesting to ratify Mr. Mark Stippa as the interim assistant principal at Middle School East from August 29th, 2022 until the end of before, on or before December the 2nd. Any questions, comments?
Is there a second?
Well, I haven't made the motion yet. I just wanted to see if there's any comments yet.
Motion, second, then question.
All right, I'll make the motion. All right. Any questions?
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So when's your section, Mr. Fountain? Mr. Dor, support personnel?
Section 8 is all on consent. That ends my section.
Very much. Governance, Mrs. Mayers?
Thank you. 9.01, approval of recommendations for the 2023 PSBA officers. I would just recommend that we all take the time to click on the link that's attached in the administrative content, just giving more information about the candidates. This does not need to be, and action doesn't need to be taken until the end of October, so.
You want to table it for next week?
I do.
And, yes, Mr. Door?
There's no one to choose. I mean, there's two spots for the bottom two. I mean, these are all, there's no other options than to move forward with this recommendation.
I, yeah, but I'd still recommend that we read about who we're moving forward. So I will, I move to table that till next week.
There a second?
I'm sorry, when you say move to table it till next week, that's when we'd be voting on it?
Yeah, we would just, we would just not have it on the consent agenda, leave it off the consent agenda.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
And then if you didn't, if you weren't ready next week, you can table it.
Right. Okay, so we don't need to table. We're just not having it on consent. Okay, thank you.
Really, I just wanted to make sure people have more time to look into it if they want to. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Comments from the board members, Ms. Evans-Brockett, Dr. Kolar, Mr. Fountain, Ms. White?
No, thank you.
Mr. Door? Mr. Keenan? Dr. Cambley?
I just, just two things. One, I wanted to, to thank all the teachers and staff for a great opening. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from my own children as far as their start to school. So thank you for all the hard work that goes into getting the school year up and running. And then my second comment, Dr. Russell, I appreciate you meeting with the two student representatives to discuss the dress code policy because I am in agreement that I think it's time that we, and I know I had mentioned it to this earlier this evening, it's time to kind of start taking a look at that and having some conversations. So I appreciate you inviting students to come and speak with you. Thank you.
Ms. Mayers?
I too wanted to echo what Dr. Cambley said. Just a great beginning to a school year. That's why we're here. Thank you to all the administrators, the teachers, and so much behind-the-scenes work that we don't know about and maybe just get a little inkling of. So, so appreciative for all that's done to make this a great year for our students.
Dr. Russell?
Oh, thank you.
Nothing from me as well. 10.03, just a notice of video recordings. And I'll rule adjournment and just note that an executive session was held prior to this board meeting for a board retreat. See everyone next week.